The town of Londonderry Town Council meeting for Monday, October 6, 2025. Everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will open public comment.
Hello, my name is Ted Koos from 57 Griffin Road. Take just a minute to read through this. Mr. Chair, there are numerous items that are in need of addressing. First, taxes. Overdevelopment related to second is exterior light pollution. Excessive traffic, especially through traffic in town. Related to four is drunk drivers. First on taxes, most owners in the town with mortgages will have refinanced at about 3%. This means that their principal and interest in insurance will in general total to less than half. To less than the taxes they pay. Each year, meaning that more than half of every mortgage payment is taxes to the town. Pay off your house, congratulations, your mortgage payments is at best slightly more than half of what it used to be. I submit that's unsustainable and the town should make preparations in the budget for mandatory cutbacks in the event of local disruptions of unemployment. Secondly, overdevelopment. The town is allowing multifamily homes, townhouses, condos and so forth to be built at an astounding rate. I don't think the town is quite aware of what happens in these homes, especially on the if depending on the administration and power at the federal level. Members of my extended family have been property managers for this kind of development. And not to put too fine a point on it, what happens is that not one family per apartment, but multiple families of the apartment move in. This has enormous impact on the town resources, namely police, then fire departments and EMS services, and finally, the school systems become overloaded and falter often with multiple language problems. Local ordinances and zoning laws are urgently needed to cease all multifamily development, excepting attached in-law apartments and homes that exist and new homes to require a minimum of two acre lot size. Third, related to development, I advocate that we make ordinances requiring exterior lighting to be of no higher than 3,000 Kelvin coordinated color temperature. This has been shown by various dark sky organizations to prevent light pollution from washing out the sky view at night. Signage and so forth for businesses should be similarly limited. I submit to you that without the night sky, this town would lose much of its bedroom community charm. And quickly, number four, through traffic is becoming excessive, in my opinion. Recently, we paved roads as evidence of an excessive amount of east-west and north-south traffic through town. Exit 4 or 4A going to bring even more. We need to seriously consider possible solutions to address east-west and north-south through traffic. And finally, on the same topic, drunk drivers barrel through town by their dozens every day. Our police does not capture them because our police are largely hands-off when it comes to traffic enforcement, which some may like, but Task Force operates by statistics and numbers and they must pull drivers over in order to find contraband and impaired drivers. When police do catch a DWI, we know statistically there are nine more they didn't catch. Mammoth Road in particular warrants strict enforcement of speed laws, especially south of Nashville Road. Nashville Road also should have strict speed enforcement. Make the stops, give warnings or tickets, but make the stops. The side roads of our town are littered with beer cans. These are not blowing out of our fine garbage collectors, they're being thrown out of cars by drivers, especially at night, and something must be done before there's a terrible tragedy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for providing this time. My name is Rick Olson for the record. I'm the president of the Londonderry Fish and Game Club. And as everybody in town is well aware, January, no, I'm sorry, December 28th, we completed construction on our 3,060 square foot clubhouse building facility. Thereafter, the town requires, or it's generally required, that an as-built be submitted to the town so that our restoration, site restoration bond may be released. That way, we're not paying additional premiums for time that we don't need to have that bond. So I followed the email stream between Langley Construction, Keach Nordstrom Engineering, because Keach Nordstrom send their people out to conduct the actual surveying for the as-built to be submitted to the town. And if you look at the document the town now has. It's dated January 10th. So August 5th, I received this invoice in my email, you know, asking me to remit for the restoration bond. And I'm wondering, it says right here, renewal premium for site improvement bond with the town of Londonderry. Please remit payment upon receipt. Thank you. So here it is, August, the project's been complete, the as-built has been submitted, and I'm getting built for a restoration bond. Now, the problem has been rectified per se. I got in touch with Sean Maholland, and I spoke with Sean, and it was, I think it was August 19th, the following day, when John finally did release the bond, John Trottier. But that leaves us where we are today. I have this premium for $963, completely and totally unnecessary. And just to give you a historical look at what's happened, back in 2019, we submitted our as-built for our 200 and 400 yard range that we constructed. That as-built, I went to ECM's offices, I picked up the actual documents, drove over here to Londonderry, brought them up to John's office and submitted them. And guess what? He never got them. So that's twice. So it's like I said during the phone call, when he says he never got it, but Langley Construction says they submitted it, I believe them. I don't know what's going on, but this is the kind of buffoonery that people don't need. You know, this is the kind of stuff, and you know, I welcome Sean Maholland to the town, and I really have big beliefs that he's going to change a lot of this stuff. But still, today, as I stand here, I've got a bill for $963. So it was my intent to submit that directly to the town to see what flesh is out. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Can I just say one thing? Okay, ahead, you want?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I got a text that this isn't on TV. I just want to make sure the recording, it says on air.
Okay.
Is there something we can check on that, Tristan?
Yeah.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say to Mr. Olson, I would appreciate it as one counselor is if you would give us an update when this gets resolved, so we can make sure that it's all taken care of, please.
Everything is resolved, but the money.
Well, when you, when the money is resolved, would you let us know kindly? Thank you very much.
Anybody else have public comment?
Good evening. I'm Donna Plant, I'm the Assistant Director of the Leech Library. I'm not being compensated to be here before you tonight. I am here on behalf of a majority of the Leech Library staff to share a statement with you. And if you'd like, I do have copies I can give to you afterward. Megan Donovan, Head of Circulation Services is also here with me. On October 6, 2025, today, the Leech Library staff made a majority vote of no confidence in the Leech Library Board of Trustees, specifically Chair Liz Thomas, Treasurer Jan McLaughlin, Trustee Christine Fitzgerald, and Trustee Maura Ryan. Due to these trustees' recent unprofessional and demeaning treatment toward Library Director Erin Matlin, the library staff did not invite Director Matlin to participate in the vote, nor the writing of this statement. Under their leadership, the board's majority has placed undue strain on library staff and undermined the library's core mission, pursuing practices more aligned with a for-profit business model than the public service expected of a public library. Recent actions and decisions by the board have damaged public trust, disrupted operations, and exceeded or misapplied the authority granted to them by law and by the community they serve. Staff concerns have grown over the board's handling of financial matters, including the oversight of their own funds. Despite receiving private donations for library programs, collections, and initiatives, the board has repeatedly failed to financially support these efforts. The trustees above also continue to wrongly accuse Library Director Matlin of mismanaging the library's annually appropriated town budget, despite the library returning funds to the town every year under her oversight. Proposed policy and procedure changes further exacerbate staff concerns. These changes would severely impact staff morale and limit the directors and staff's ability to manage day-to-day operations effectively. Under the current leadership, the board has created a work environment demanding compliance rather than collaboration. The Leech Library and its patrons deserve a board that partners with its staff to promote and advocate for library services with transparency, respect, and accountability. The Leech Library staff respectfully requests the Board of Trustees take the following actions. Number one, publicly acknowledge this letter in response to these concerns and writing as a board. Reschedule the mediation meeting with the staff, town manager, and town council liaison within 45 days to have an open dialogue and address all staff concerns. Number two, reconsider policy changes that limit the directors and staff's decision-making, particularly policies that impose micromanagement, create service delays, and waste taxpayer funds, such as the extensive tracking of used book donations. Number three, recognize the importance of library outreach and allow management staff the necessary administrative time to represent the library in classrooms and at town meetings and community events. Number four, commit to holding all regular, special, and committee meetings in public to the extent possible under New Hampshire RSA 91A to promote transparency and actively seek input from the staff in public. Restore the second public comment period at all meetings as requested by Londonderry voters. Number five, ensure board members seek approval from the majority of the board in a public meeting before independently representing or speaking on behalf of the board's goals, initiatives, or interests. Number six, take accountability for board decisions after a vote, no matter which trustees were not present for the vote. Repeatedly revisiting or overturning decisions causes delays in service and confusion among both staff and the public. Number seven, empower staff by celebrating their contributions, achievements, and progress. Commit to supporting professional development opportunities that enhance staff skills, morale, and job satisfaction. And number eight, issue a public apology to Director Erin Matlin, who has been publicly blamed and privately badgered by the majority, by the board's majority for insubordination, despite following the board's own policies and historical practices in relation to staff salaries and evaluations, hiring, library expenses, library programs, contract renewals, acquisitions, and gifts, and more. This statement is submitted in good faith, with the hope that these concerns will lead to positive change and restore a healthy, functional working relationship between library staff and the board. If these requests cannot be met by any member of the board, the library staff respectfully requests their resignation, as these steps are key to rebuilding the trust they have broken with library staff and the Londonderry community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like a coffee?
Please.
Just trying to make your life easier.
Counselors, while Assistant Director Plant is handing that out, I just wanted to let you know that the cable server is still down, it has not been replaced yet. So broadcasting on live on the cable channels is not possible right now. But it is being broadcast live on the YouTube. So if you go to the, if you go to the website and link to our YouTube page, the YouTube Gov page, you'll be able to watch it live.
Is there an announcement we can make on the town page or something like that, just to make sure that people who regularly watch it on cable would be aware? Because if they're not seeing it, they're not seeing this.
I can certainly put it on Facebook right now if you'd like. I can definitely do that. That's probably the best way. There is a link to watch it live on the town council page that links to the YouTube page. All right.
It is live on YouTube.
On the YouTube, let me pull up the exact address, hold on.
Just in case anyone asks.
So if you go to our website and hover over the watch, there's a link to the YouTube government site. And it's called Londonderry NH Government Access. That's the page name, Londonderry NH Government Access, and that's where you can go to watch it live. So I'll post that on Facebook now and make sure it has it on the website.
Anybody else have public comment? Good evening, Sheri.
Good evening. Sheri Farrell, chairperson for our Senior Resource Committee and Chairman Dunn. I thank you for encouraging me to come and share a little bit about how successful.
You guys had a great program.
Yeah, the senior expo was. Many wonderful people made little work, and so many great people showed up. Just a little history on it, we started four years ago, and that was under our great leadership of Jim Green, who sadly, we lost a short time ago. And he was an inspiration to all of us who'd been on the committee for a long time and our new members. And then back about four years ago, truly before he started, we were starting to fade the committee, we were kind of wondering what's our purpose. Through the years, we had accomplished a mailbox that's out in front of the police station, but you know, transportation, helping our seniors, and we just could never quite get there. And then all of a sudden, at one of our meetings, and I think sometimes it's important to always remember and never forget how these things get started, because I think sometimes we think, oh, it was this. It actually happened, our chief Bernard, who wasn't chief back then, was our liaison, and he was sitting there, and I think he could feel the energy was kind of fading in the room. And he all of a sudden came up with, and he said, hey, what about having a senior expo? I know some other communities have had great ones, why don't we have one here? And all of a sudden, our wonderful leader Jim ran with it, and we were all very excited. And from that one idea that Chief Bernard, you know, had the courage to bring forward, here we are today. The initial project, we had about 200 people that attended, and maybe 40 or so nonprofits, vendors, and others that help our seniors and assist. And then as we got to the one we just had on Saturday at our high school gymnasium between 10:00 and 1:00, it was, we were over, we are thinking around 4:50. Our little clicker said, you know, just around 400, but we know people got past us. So it was quite an amazing event, and the weather cooperated. We had high school volunteers there, the new firefighter program, encouraging young students to get involved with that. Children showed up to help us, and they were a huge help lifting and moving things, our paid forward group with Katie Sullivan, and then the wonderful committee that behind the scenes was putting it all together and working to make sure that that, that the day took place. Another part of it is, is that we have many wonderful liaisons on the committee, but now moving forward from Chief Bernard's original idea, we have Captain Patrick Cheatham, who, you know, sits on the committee, attends every meeting, and he ran with it, you know, signing up for the gym, doing all those things behind the scenes. And of course, we can never forget our incredible Director of the Senior Center, Elona, because keeping track of almost 70 nonprofits this year is quite a task, and her Excel spreadsheet and contact information really led the way, along with the work of everyone on the committee. And again, never to be forgotten, the heart of our leader, Jim Green, who, you know, decided we could make this happen, and it did. So those are all the important things, and I think it's a great example of when many good people are all kind of rowing the boat in the same direction, no obstacles, just, you know, being positive, and it came together, and it was really exciting for all of us to be a part of. Something we decided kind of at the last minute to put out there was our Boston Post Kane, because you know, we, original date for that, for applications, was October 1st, and we had only one applicant, so we decided that we'd give people a little extra time because we weren't really good about getting the information out there. So we put it on display, borrowed it from the library with the approval of our wonderful Director Erin. She carried it over even, God bless her, to us, and we put it on display with Deb DeRosa, put out some applications, made a quick little sign, and, and we actually got some applications for that. We extended the date, was that my bell? Talked October 31st. No worries, but anyway, thank you for all of your support.
You have 45 seconds left.
Oh, I do? Oh, sorry, I heard that bell. But yeah, so you know, I just don't want anyone to be forgotten. It's a wonderful committee, so many humble heroes, as all of you, because you know, the work that everyone does behind the scenes to make these great things happen. But just seeing the seniors come through, and not just their, the seniors themselves, but with their families or neighbors, young people that are caring for us, because remember, we all know we're an aging community, so you know, great effort, and I'm hoping now in the future, goal for our committee is that we look at our transportation issues, and I know that our town manager already has that in play with all of you, which is wonderful. And then also that outreach to how do we actually get to those people that, you know, don't have internet, some that don't even have TVs that need us. So another exciting part is we have our meeting tomorrow night as a follow-up, so we're all very excited. One of our members had the great idea to actually kind of quickly ask people as they left the gym, what'd you think? What did we do right? What did we do wrong? Or what could we do better, is a better way to put it. So yeah, and if you have any suggestions for us, because we just hope to get bigger and better each time. So if I forgot anyone.
I just want to thank you guys for doing it. It was wonderful. It was very well attended, and everyone seemed to be having a good time, asking good questions. The vendors were happy, they were engaged. So it was very, very good. You guys did a nice job.
Boy, and I meant to bring probably today, I know many of us on the committee, I had probably four emails today just from, like you said, the, one of our physical therapy places, Jill reached a beautiful letter, many people, so you know, great things happening in the best town Londonderry, so thank you. Any other questions? Just thank you for your support.
Challenge to make it even bigger.
Yeah, bigger and better, year five, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have public comment? Seeing that, I will close public comment. First up on the agenda tonight is we have a resignation. So I will accept a motion to accept a resignation from Paul Peddell, who was the former Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee. His resignation is effective immediately. So moved. Motion by Sean, second by Ted. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Paul, thank you for your service. Next up, we have Leech Library trustee alternates, interviews, and appointments. First up is Erica Lowey.
Would you like me standing or sitting this evening?
It's up to you.
Oh, no.
If you want to say a little bit about yourself, and then we'll see if you have questions.
Sure, thank you. My name is Erica Lowey. I've been a resident of Londonderry for about six and a half years now. Born and raised in New Hampshire, but had the honor and privilege of living all over the world and all over the country before bringing back my family here to raise them and proximity to grandparents and things like that. I'm a clinical social worker, and my background is in the nonprofit sector, particularly with domestic violence and sexual assault victims and survivors. And I currently run my own practice, providing evaluations for individuals who are going through and litigating divorce cases, who are dealing with domestic violence implications. I also sometimes get to work really exciting cases, like homicide cases, but the, my bread and butter is family court, which is fun. I also am an avid knitter and a triathlete, and a big reader, and I have a very passionate dedication for community involvement and community building and working together and building connections between people. And the library has been an awesome place for me, and it's somewhere that I would like to give my time and energy in service and in gratitude for the amount of, the, just the wonderful things they provide this community and have provided my family, both here in Londonderry, and then, as I said, literally all over the world. I have always found libraries to be a wonderful space for community engagement and all of that, so that's why I would like to be here tonight, or why I would like to be able to provide service on the board.
Thank you. Any questions? Deb, you want to start?
I guess so. I don't have three, because I thought it was too many. Last time it took too long. So I came, I came up with this one. So what unique qualification or experience do you bring to this role that sets you apart from the other applicants?
It's an excellent question. Besides my charming personality, I believe what, what sets me apart from other applicants is my nonprofit experience. Like I said, it's extensive, and I have a huge amount of experience as a result of being, I mean, nonprofit life is very hodgepodge. You are giving, you are hired, you work a role, you have grants that you work within, but because you're always working with very limited resources, limited people, and limited money, everyone's covering a whole bunch of different roles outside of their job description on top of that. So I am very familiar with how much effort it takes for a group of people to pull together and accomplish something when it feels kind of overwhelming and like a lot. I have had the privilege of having a lot of experience while being a clinician, with also doing legal advocacy, hotline work, making beds, speaking with reporters, and providing that, that outreach to, to the media, doing community education and service, providing individual and group therapy. So having this wide mix of, of experiences simultaneously, all under one umbrella, is something that has made me, I think, wonderfully qualified to be able to take on a role that is not only, and it's not just about administration of funding, but is also about supporting that thriving community. And of course, as a component of that, again, from the nonprofit background, I have a lot of experience with dealing with the limited funding, and also needing to be extremely careful about the implementation and management of funding for programs in accordance with the way grants have been assigned. So that's something that I'm very comfortable with.
Thank you.
Jane, you must have questions.
I do.
They're all typed up, too.
They're all different from last time, so compared yourself from last time.
I thought I did my homework.
So as you're aware, there have been some ongoing conflicts between the Board of Trustees regarding the library. Some of these issues involve how the library should function. How would you try to resolve these issues?
A clarifying question, is that on the board specifically, or is that between the board and the library staff?
Between the board and the library.
I think the primary thing that, that always offers us the greatest opportunity for conflict resolution is the opportunity to communicate. In the open letter that was read earlier, one of the requests was for mediation between the Board of Trustees and the library staff, and I think that's a phenomenal idea. I think at, at best, there are two parties here that are between the staff and the trustees that aren't really being able to, they aren't really communicating their messages effectively and aren't really able to hear the other side effectively. And I think at worst, there's willful avoidance of that common bridging of the gap in the communication and, and hearing each other's perspectives and collaboration. So to my mind, one of the first things that would be very important if I were in a role like this and able to have part of, be part of making that decision is pushing for that, that mediation, that opportunity to communicate more effectively, and from there, being able to build comb and communal goals for what does the library look like and how do we manage it. From my perspective, the trustees are elected to steward the library and shepherd the library, but the staff and the director of the library are hired because they know what they're doing, and it's their job to have those visions and have those goals and move forward. And if there's a, if there's a truly a disconnect between what the staff want to do and what the elected officials want, then part of what needs to happen is that conversation about, well, when you were hired, why did we not see this? Why, why were we not able to make our visions compatible? Why, why did we not have compatible visions? We have staff right now who have phenomenal ideas, and who are, and particularly the director has been taking massive steps towards improving and broadening the library services. And as a trustee, I would support that, because those are things that I too want to see in my community and want to see in the library. If that's not what is going on between the two parties, then I think, again, going back to that, open and honest and respectful communication is crucial, otherwise nothing can happen, and we get the kind of position we're in right now.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Actually, I'm sorry, may I ask you all a question?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. I was curious if you have determined a process by which alternate, the chosen alternates are selected for any given meeting? So for example, if we know in advance that someone, that one of the trustees is going to be absent for a meeting, how is it going to be determined which alternate fills the slot for that meeting?
So I don't think that falls under our jurisdiction, actually. So we have, we have two very limited powers, the bottom line, selection of alternates and that's it.
The reason, the reason I asked is I know that efforts to even figure out how to select having alternates has been a very rocky road for the board, which is why I wanted to just check in and see if that was something that you had also taken on, but all right.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the time on that.
Yep, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Belcher. I've lived in Londonderry for forty-five years. I'm retired. I worked in software engineering for many years. That has given me a lot of skills in, in organization and so forth. And I also have a master's in English, literature and communications, which has given me skills in knowing about library things. And before I even go any further though, I want to say, I don't have, I have, I think I have capabilities that will help with the board. We're having a lot of trouble with the board, everybody knows that. But some people might be better. I would vote for Erica if I were you, because I think Erica is wonderful. And she has been at some of the trustee meetings and she has been...
Advocating for your competition.
The only, the only thing I'm interested in is improving what's going on with the board. It doesn't have to be me, it would be fine. If it's me, I'd be happy to give my service. But based on, based on Erica's input at some of the trustee meetings, I think she just has an excellent grasp on what's going on and what needs to be done. So, but back to me.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have to ask each one of them, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask each one, he said, anybody questions? I said, I'm going to ask each one. So what unique qualification or experience do you bring to this role that sets you apart from all the others? It's just, there's so many good candidates, I'm trying to find out what's the uniqueness about people.
I understand. It's hard for me to think of myself as unique in any particular way. I try to be middle of the road and I have all kinds of different experiences that other people might have too. But overall, I think I have a combination of library interest and study and, and organization and leading meetings and trying to focus in on what the real problems are.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Not unique, but...
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about your experience leading meetings? Could you tell us about your experience leading meetings? You had mentioned that in one of your skills.
Well, when I, before I retired, I worked in software engineering. I was project manager and project leader in different, different times and, and we'd be up to meet, schedule meetings and get the right people talking and the right people not talking and the right things turned in when they needed to be turned in and so forth and keep communications going amongst the various members. So in a nutshell, that's, is that what you're going for?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There's all different kinds of meetings and I'm in software, so I'm well familiar with how project management and leading those meetings go. So that was good, thank you.
Any other questions, Dan?
I don't have any.
Okay.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up, Kurt Schmetel. Schmetel, okay. I apologize. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Kurt Schmetel, I'm retired. I was in healthcare most of my career. I worked downtown, Harvard Teaching Hospitals. I have a master of business administration. I was the vice president of support services at Beth Israel Deaconess.
Can you speak into the mic because I'm sorry? No, no, this one, the one that looks like this.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was the vice president of support services at Beth Israel Deaconess. I regularly attended board meetings. I've served on at least half a dozen boards in my career and I've specialized in operations. And I have a good reputation working with people. I like to walk, walk the talk and, you know, get to know what people do. But really, I, you know, the board position, I'm really here because...
Just speaking to the mic, just...
The library is a special place and I hate reading about it every week. And I had a boss who told me that I should always do community service. And so I thought of being on the library board for a couple of years. But here I am finally.
Excellent.
That's it.
Any questions? Start off with Deb again.
Well, again, what unique qualification or experience do you bring forward for this role that sets you apart from all others?
Well, I'm good with budgets. I'm a supply chain management expert. I was a chief purchasing officer for the networks that I worked with. I have a very good reputation managing people. I've managed 500-plus people and without, without ever seriously getting into any trouble. But I think folks should, I have a reputation worth working with people and creating some harmony and direction and common vision.
Thank you very much.
You had mentioned other boards and commissions that you had served on in the past. I didn't see them written down. Can you tell us a bit more about those?
Yeah. Most recently, Big Brother, Big Sister of Massachusetts Bay. Hospital Laundry Association in Boston. Habitat for Learning in Boston. Northeast School of Broadcasting, a long time ago, in Boston. I guess those are the ones that come to the top of my head.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. You mentioned that you're tired reading about the library, about the stuff. So if you've attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting or watched them at home, you might have noticed at times conflicts between trustees, staff and the public regarding many issues such as staffing, duties of the staff, expenditures, evaluations of staff members. How would you address these issues as an alternate trustee?
Well, I would hire a competent librarian. And it appears there's a, I'm not sure exactly what the issues are at the library. Are they budget issues? Are they personality, personality issues? I don't know. I really have no idea. But they seem, there seems to be conflict. And as I say, you know, the library is like school, like the church, like your town, you know? You don't want to see it in controversy all the time. Special place for kids and adults and we ought to treat it that way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Next up, Jonathan Esposito.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, folks. This one on, can I be? Jonathan Esposito, I've been a resident of Londonderry for about ten years now. Reside with my wife and three children. We are great patrons of the Leach Library. My children benefit from the programming. My wife enjoys access to the material and I frequently telework from the library space. I'm currently serving as a trustee of trust funds, but I'd like the opportunity to further serve the community if I was appointed, so I figured I'd throw my name in the hat. Currently working as an accountant, so I have a finance background that I think would be beneficial to the library, but I have some other skills that I think would be helpful also. I welcome your questions.
Any questions?
The same question, oh. I'm sorry.
No, Dan, go ahead. You want to start?
Okay.
Let Dan start, yeah.
Okay, I just was automatic.
Mr. Esposito, how do you see the library evolving and growing? How will you support the staff, the board and its effort to bring forward new services that will meet the needs of our community?
If I was appointed as a trustee, I would actually defer to the library staff on that. I know there's a great call for the community. I read letters, I hear from folks. They really, you know, they're pretty pleased with the Gmails and the access to material itself, but they want to see more programming. I consistently hear that folks want to see the library just offer more programming to more age ranges and so on. So I would do my best to collaborate with the staff to empower that and make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, now my turn?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. What unique qualification or experience do you bring to this role to set you apart from all the other candidates?
I think I have two particular skillsets that would be beneficial. My last employment before my current one, I served as a budget analyst for the federal government, assisting water scientists and providing needed services to the communities. Where in New Hampshire, we certainly have our fair share of our water issues. Because I have a background in, particularly in budget analysis, I know that the library trustees are struggling to kind of take that responsibility back from the director in accordance with state law and to help, you know, craft a budget that works for the community and that keeps the library on track. I believe my background in budget analysis would particularly be useful there. I also, when I worked at the Department of Veterans Affairs at our local veterans hospital, I was on the Ethics Consult Review Committee. I know there's been some questions as to whether or not the Library Board of Trustees has always acted in an ethical manner. And because I have a background in evaluating ethics issues, I think I could kind of help keep them on track in that regard.
Any other questions?
Yes. You've stated on social media in the past that our public school system should be dissolved and that you've been publicly critical of our library and the staff. Why would you want to be an alternate and how would you be supportive of the board and the staff that you've been so critical of?
I'm a homeschool parent, so I do have some reservations about the public school system and I've certainly made those known in front of school board meetings before. As far as the library itself, I have no qualms with the library. I do have some questions as to whether or not, I've raised concerns as to whether or not the director has always acted appropriately. I know that if I, you know, rolled my eyes at my boss, the way I've seen her do with the Board of Trustees in public meetings, I would probably be terminated. So I'm not sure that there's a healthy relationship there. There does seem to be some toxicity issues, but if I was appointed as an alternate, I would actually work to resolve those issues rather than enhance them, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Richard Belinsky, forty-year resident, Town of Londonderry, former town treasurer, former vice chair of this original school charter committee. I've coached baseball and soccer in the past. And I think you guys know pretty much everything else about me.
All right. Any questions for Richard?
All right. What unique qualification or experiences do you bring forward to this role that sets you apart from any other candidate?
Well, I've done budgeting through one of my former jobs as a pots manager at a major dealership in the state of New Hampshire, dealing with multimillion dollar inventories. Obviously, multimillion dollar budget with the town of Londonderry. One of the things I did when I came in as town treasurer is they had no purchasing policy. While I didn't write it, I was a little bit involved in it. I made sure that that got put through because there was no way of doing anything as far as purchasing went. Library is working on the same thing because they had the same problem, no purchasing policy. I'm pretty up to date on the state laws, which is what a lot of the conflict at the library between trustees and the library director is happening because of the misconception with the state laws. One of the trustee meetings back in December, Erin Matlin brought up the fact that she was giving raises out. She said, you know, I brought them over to the town over the HR. And at public comment, I made sure that I heard her correctly and said, you've been giving out the raises? She said, yes. So I informed her that in accordance with state law, she's involved in it, obviously as the director, but the only entity that can hire, terminate or set compensation by New Hampshire state law is the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees didn't know these raises were happening. This can be verified because I believe it was December 28th, I wrote a email to the Board of Trustees. I told them, I brought up all the assays, everything is in the email. I copied Erin Matlin. Erin Matlin, at that time, sent a little short email back to me saying she'd worked with the Board of Trustees to change the bylaws or whatever needed to be changed. And I informed her it didn't matter because you would have to change state law. State law is state law. My understanding is the raises kept happening until fairly recently that they were not being, the Board of Trustees was not being involved. They need to be involved. You actually had one of the library employees, I don't know, three, four, maybe five meetings ago, stand up at public comment and say the Board of Trustees was getting involved in the raises, in their reviews. They're supposed to get involved by state law. They're supposed to set the budget under their job description, says they shall, and one of them is formulate the budget in consultation with the library director. So they don't cut her out. She can bring forth what she wants, they sit down. So a lot of it has to do with the laws. If a lot of the laws that are out there now were followed, and the bylaws and the personnel policy, in both sides, and both sides of the, of the Board of Trustees that aren't getting along, will all sit down and go by that. You have to go by them until they're changed. They are what they are until they're changed at the state level. And that's not being done. There was resistance to the camera being put in so people could see what's going on. I'm the one that brought forth that the cable contract has money in it to wire it. They didn't have to pay for that. That got done. The alternates tonight is what I brought up nine months ago. They should have alternates in case they do not have a quorum. And there seems to be resistance on both sides that, well, we don't want to do these things, but these need to be done. It's what the law requires. If you don't like what the law requires, then you go and you try to get the law changed. Call one of your state reps, say I want to, you know, do X, Y and Z, and let's see where this goes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
So I've watched some of the videos of some of the past meetings. How do you think your personality may be on the board compared to how it is now? Because it seems like right now you're kind of blowing from a perspective that you're kind of, very much a, it's very challenging in a way of getting across your message to the board? And I'm wondering how that may change if you became a trustee?
Well, first of all, I won't be a trustee, I'll be an alternate. So I don't vote on anything. I can, you know, suggest that we try this or that.
If someone was absent.
Right. But right now, we're talking about being put on as an alternate.
That may be, but your voice is still heard as an alternate. You may not be voting at that time, but your voice can still be heard.
Ted, you want me to answer the question? You want to keep interrupting? I know you're upset with me because I called you out.
I'm not upset with you, sir.
As liaison to the town, Town Council liaison to the library.
No, I'm just trying to correct what you're saying.
You didn't show up to any of the meetings until I brought that up and you're upset about that.
I'm just trying to correct what you're saying because you will still have a voice when you're on that board, even though you may not be voting at that particular time unless you're appointed as a trustee. I'm just wondering, how would your personality change if you were appointed?
I don't think I need to change my personality. When I'm bringing up state laws and people are resistant to them, I'm going to be forceful that they need to follow the state law or the bylaw or whatever it is in the personnel policy. The problem is you have people on both sides, I'm not going to say it's just one side, that are resistant to this. You need, that's where you need to start. If that can get straightened out, the laws, the bylaws, the personnel, and everybody's on the same page, quite frankly, I think a vast majority of this conflict is going to go away. And until such time, I don't believe it will. I will bring these out. I have brought them out. I have brought them out. That's why we're sitting here today, because they were talking about how they had a hard time getting quorums during the summer, because people are on vacation, go away for two, three weeks, whatever, normal. And I said, well, under New Hampshire state law, and I don't remember off the top of my head the number, I said, why don't we look at getting alternates? You can have between one and three. That way you don't have that problem. I brought this up, I think it was in December or January, and here we are October, and it's still not done, and the meeting, two or three meetings ago, had to get canceled because they didn't have a quorum. These issues won't come up. You have to follow the law, and the bylaws, and the personnel, to start, and then work from there. You can change, you know, two of those are living documents, the state laws aren't. The bylaws and the personnel policy are living documents, that they can sit down and discuss if something needs to be changed. But people got to stop being so resistant to following the law as it's written. It is what it is until it no longer is. It's just the way it is. I mean, I've proposed law changes in the past, actually Chair Dunn brought them up to Conca and put them forth. They didn't pass, but that's what I had to do to try to get them to change. This is where the conflicts are, all right? There shouldn't have been no conflict once I pointed out the RSAs in December about how the chain of command was supposed to go on the raises. Doesn't cut anybody out, this is the way it has to be done. Yet it still was getting done the wrong way, up until the public, the public review they did, that they should have never done in public because that's not legal. And in New Hampshire state law, the only time it can be done legally in public, even if it's the person who's in question, is if it's discipline or dismissal, they can ask for a public hearing. Yet it still happened. I would have, I would have put forth that they didn't do what they did, because that just caused more conflict when that was done. So had they followed the law, there wouldn't have been the conflict.
Any other questions for Richard? See, no, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next up, Maria Broad. Good evening, Maria.
Hello. My name is Maria Barud. I've been president of Londonderry for now thirteen years. I'm a supporter of library for many years now. I have three kids in Londonderry School, so we use library services frequently. I especially enjoy the online options that are provided now with several options in GMILs. My kids tremendously like library, and my high schooler is there after school often. I'm originally from Poland, and library played a crucial role in helping me learn English, obtain jobs, and become a citizen of the United States. So I would like to, I spend my time to giving back to the library. I participate in Friends of Library and volunteer for various programs. So I would like to bring my knowledge to the library. I've been, I've graduated from the Leadership Londonderry in 2003. That program encouraged me even more to participate and help library and help the town. And from 2022 to 25, I was a cemetery trustee.
Any questions for Maria?
Dan, you want to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
So if you have attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting or watched them at home, you might have noticed at times conflicts between trustees, staff, and the public regarding many issues such as staffing, duties of the staff, expenditures, evaluations of staff members. How would you address these issues as an alternate?
Very good question. So it's quite frustrating to watch the meetings online and seeing the conflict where a lot of these issues could have been resolved peacefully a while ago. One is the following the law. The other thing is by communicating, by negotiating. I negotiate during the meetings daily at my job as a trade compliance officer. I lead the meetings where there was many different opinions, lots of conflicts, a lot of discussions about finances and budgets. So my core goal during the meetings is to hear everybody, follow the law, provide ability for conversation and discussion, and cutting down on any unnecessary comments, because when there was a group of people, there is high emotions going sometimes, and people get taken over by their emotions. And here we have a library where we need to provide for the community, provide for the staff remaining fiscally responsible. So we need to put the emotions to the side and personal dislikes or likes to the side and focus strictly on following the law and following the proper procedures.
Thank you.
Okay. Same to you as I did everyone else. What unique qualification or experience do you bring forward to this role that sets you apart from the others?
So as a graduate of the Leadership Londonderry, I was able to learn specifics about the governance of our town and library and various functions. And also, as a cemetery trustee for three years, I was faced with managing budget and making difficult decisions. So I would like to bring that experience as a library alternate. And as I mentioned before, professionally, I'm a trade compliance officer. It's a very complex job that requires a lot of attention to detail, a lot of research, and following the various instructions. So I would like to bring that into the library. And library needs support from the community, so I would like to help with that as well, bringing the community in by providing lots of information about what's going on, what are the issues facing library, without the emotional part of it, just straight, what's the issue, what we need, just like library needs staffing and we need, well luckily we got the two part-time librarians recently, but we definitely need more staffing. So I would like to help library and help director so the trustees do their job and don't micromanage the director, and also, but also remind fiscally responsible to the town taxpayers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See, no, thank you, Maria. Up next, Amy Agostino. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Amy. I've lived in Londonderry about twenty-one years. I raised kids here who are now grown and flown, and I'm still here with my husband and our dogs. I am not a businessperson or an accountant, I'm a nurse. I was an EMT before I was a nurse. I've worked in areas from basic med surg through women and children's health, opt-in to, yeah, I've worked in many different areas. So, yeah, a little bit of a different angle here. I love the library. I have always loved libraries from the time I was little. When I moved here, I was homeschooling, so it was a huge resource for me and my kids. They ended up going and graduating from Londonderry High. When I have friends who move to new areas and they're like, I don't know anybody, go to the library, get a library card, start talking to people, go to book club, you'll find your people there. Yeah, that's why I'm here. I love the library, I want to be able to have a role in supporting it.
Excellent. Any questions?
Okay. What unique qualification? Well, you already told us, you come from it from a different perspective.
Well, that is the thing.
Answer the question.
Well, kind of, but the reason that's a cool thing is that in medicine and nursing, it's all about communication and teamwork. You can't miscommunicate, like, it's important. So my communication style, I don't know, I think is a lot more effective. I'm very good with people. I've had to be good with many, many different kinds of people, and if you're not good with people and you don't communicate well and work as a team, well, people die. So that also makes me fairly unflappable. Laws are important, budgets are important, but, you know, it's not life or death. We're going to figure it out. So, yeah, I think it really just gives me a much different angle on peopling and communicating.
Thank you.
So you said you love the library. In your observation and interaction with the staff at the library, what level of or kind of service do you feel the library staff is providing to the community of Londonderry?
Our library staff are incredible. I think the library is really the closest thing we have to a community center. I was just there this morning and happened to note the little sign on the door that says, everyone, the library is for everyone, welcome. The staff have never failed to be super knowledgeable, really friendly. Half the time I'm greeted by name when I come in, and they do that with a lot of people. They are juggling so many things that we don't even see, and they do it with a smile and grace and competence. The programs alone, from the time I moved here with my little ones, I will confess I was maybe a wee bit disappointed in the library, and it has grown so much. The programming, things for people of all ages, they really work to engage people. I just looked up their mission statement earlier, I wish I could recall it word for word, but it was about making sure that every member of the community has their needs met for information, recreation, and there was one more thing. I just, yeah, they have a really broad goal and mission, and I think they're killing it with some unfriendly obstacles lately.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Carolyn Stoller.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Carolyn. I grew up in Londonderry. I have lived here most of my life. And I've studied mathematics at UNH, and I have also worked in community outreach, in marketing communications, and as a tutor. Currently, I have served as a caregiver for my grandparents and currently just my grandmother. So I've seen, both growing up in Londonderry, I've seen personally how much the library has evolved and changed and done so much good for me, and I've also seen how much it has to offer seniors and even people who are housebound, and the effort that has gone into reaching everyone in town, no matter their limitations, and I would really like to support that.
All right. Any questions? You want to start, Dan?
I don't have any.
Okay. Yep.
Well, I'm going to be fair to everybody, so sorry. What unique qualification or experience do you bring to this role that sets you apart from all the other candidates that just stepped up and spoke?
Well, two things. First off, as I mentioned, I have the perspective of someone who grew up in Londonderry and has seen the programs for kids and teens and how much those have grown, and I also see what good can be done for seniors and, you know, what is missing, what more we could do, especially for our aging population, to keep reaching people in Londonderry, keep doing that good. And I'm really impressed with all the effort that's gone into that so far, but I think my perspective in particular, having seen both sides of that, and the importance of both of those things, is an important perspective. The other thing is my experience in communications. So I've worked in communications for the Sharp Center for Interpersonal Violence Prevention Awareness and Advocacy. So I've talked to a variety of people, college students, parents, faculty, and staff, as well as community members, administrators, state and federal lawmakers about topics like sexual and domestic violence, which are, you know, not necessarily comfortable topics for everyone. And I've also talked to a lot of people about math, which is uncomfortable in a slightly different way. So I like to call this talking to people about things they don't necessarily want to talk about, but probably should. And so I've had a lot of productive conversations that have maybe even started out with people angry or apathetic, college students are really good at both, and been able to get productive conversations and work as a bridge between these very different populations and, you know, different political parties, different community needs, and talking to people even, you know, about topics that may be confusing, broad, and I know how to reach people and how to assess when we're not reaching people, when we're not getting the point across, when people don't know what you do or misunderstand what you do.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. I'm going to throw something out to you guys. After seeing the statement with no confidence from the Leach Library Board of Trustees, I'm just wondering if we should maybe go a different path today, like...
Well, I'd like to add something on this. Being the liaison to the Leach Library, I have tried, some people have mentioned that, you know, we should try to have mediation. I tried that with town manager, we both tried, and that got shut down. Since then, I've seen nothing but chaos on the Board of Trustees. We're being asked to put three alternates on there as Board of Trustees. I don't see this as going to solve a problem. I think it's going to create more of a problem. I want to share something from an email that we all got over the weekend from a gentleman, and I'm just going to highlight some of the areas. It says, "Alternate library trustees confers power to conduct town business on people who haven't been chosen by the people of the town in a way that doesn't and can't happen with any other elected board in this community." That'd be like asking somebody to say, let's add alternates to the town council, all right? Because if two of us are out, or three of us are out. Some may agree that the library trustees inability to hold meeting on September 3rd due to a lack of a quorum shows the value of having alternates. But gentleman said, "I think it proves just the opposite. The library trustees had to cancel their meeting, and the sky didn't fall. The world didn't end, and the library opened its doors as planned the following morning. The trustees themselves apparently recognized that there wasn't anything so urgent that it needed to be addressed immediately. They didn't call for a special meeting, even though they can." So they waited three weeks to have another meeting on September 24th. So he says, "If you feel compelled to appoint alternates, that don't appoint anyone who was unsuccessful candidate for any office on the March 25th town ballot. The voters of Londonderry had a chance to confer political power to those folks, and for whatever reason, we collectively decided not to do so. To appoint them would not directly contradict the express will of the people." Continues to say, "The fact that this whole discussion has dragged on for months," and I agree, it's dragged on for months, "we're now closer to the March 26 election. So appointing library alternates is a solution in search of a problem. None of our neighboring communities, if you look at Auburn, Derry, Hudson, Litchfield, Windham, even Manchester, where the library trustees are appointed rather than elected, don't have trustees." And then, in light of what we have learned today and the petition, I'm going to make a motion. I make a motion, the town council not appoint any alternates to the library Board of Trustees, and that in March, the voters of Londonderry select who they want to be on the library Board of Trustees.
All right, I have a motion from Dan. Discussion? My concern is, knowing what we just learned in public comment today, is we're going to ask three people to go into... is we're gonna ask three people to go into, possibly one, one to three people to go into a situation that is currently not good and we need to fix.
Exactly.
So I think before we can appoint anybody, we need to fix this situation for, this situation needs to be resolved before we can put one to three new people into it. And, I don't know, how does, how do the rest of you guys feel?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, let's go here.
Um, how much money so far has this cost the town in legal fees? Does anyone know? Like, I know they're using our lawyers, I don't know a lot of it. I think all of you know more than what I do of what's going on. But, um, how, how much is that bill? And how, how much more is it's gonna escalate? I, I just feel like, very, very frustrated.
Yeah.
Um, trying to do the right thing.
Yeah.
Everybody up here likes the library, I don't think there's one person that would ever say, "Let's shut down the library." Like, nobody would say that. Everybody loves the library and we're adults. We should be able to communicate and discuss our issues and problems in a civil manner and be able to get to a resolve. I mean, we do it in our family and you're having a fight with your husband and you're saying all this stuff. You, you gotta stop just screaming and actually talk. And I don't think that's going on and I, I applaud you and the town manager for trying to, to be the mediator here, but I, I just don't know and I, I don't even know if the new election is gonna change the problem. I really, really don't. But I do wanna know how much this is costing the town and how much time, you know, other boards and other departments have had to put into this to fix this problem. Can anybody give me an answer?
Sean, do you know the answer to that right now or should we?
Or ballpark.
I hate to disappoint you, but I'm not that good that I-
Okay, no. I have Justin get back to us?
Yeah, I just curious.
Would you ask Justin to let us all know?
I can determine what the legal expenses have thus far been, uh, for that. Uh, obviously the staff time that's been spent, I would, trying to calculate that would obviously be pretty high as well, but-
Okay.
I can easily get you the number of the legal expenses thus far.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
Like a rough estimate, nothing, don't have him spend hours on it.
Well, it's easy, we have a separate law firm for that, so we, whatever their bills were, I can give you that. No, I just don't have it at my fingertips, so.
I just think, is there a way of having a special meeting with, I don't know, the town manager, the, the, the trustees, the library department head, right?
Yeah.
And maybe one or two counselors, 'cause you don't want three, 'cause that's a quorum. And just trying to hash it out, a private, I, I guess with a lawyer, with the lawyer there to get it all fixed. 'Cause it's never gonna get fixed, we're just gonna keep doing this and this is like insanity.
Right.
You know, this one has this side, this one has this, there's gotta be some happy ground and we've gotta find it.
Right.
And the frustrating part of that is we've got 12 good candidates.
They're wonderful candidates.
Wonderful candidates that have applied.
And then people are just kicking-
I, I, I agree, all, all the candidates are excellent.
Yeah.
I just, learning what I learned today from the employees, I, I just, I think we have to fix the, we have to fix this problem before we go and appoint.
So, can you ask the, or I can, I guess, the town manager, what I just said, is it possible to kinda like do that in a, in a result, a non-meeting kinda thing, not publicly but privately? So everybody can say what they need to say, the lawyers are there and hash it out.
We tried that.
If you have the entirety of the Board of Trustees, there would be a meeting.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
If you have the entirety of the Board of Trustees, there would be a meeting.
Well, no, just the chair and the vice chair, like, that's it. Or something like that. I don't know, I'm just trying to come up with an answer.
I'd be willing to be another person with you, Dan, on that, to help resolve these issues. If that was something that we felt would be good, I'd, I'd volunteer for that, I'd try to help fix it.
Mr. Town Manager, can you do anything?
To be, uh, clear on this, uh, I had approached the library Board of Trustees and the staff. Staff was very, uh, forthcoming, they submitted questions, concerns they had. I asked for, um, the trustees, only got it from a couple. Um, told them that it was gonna be town manager, myself, that would be, um, sitting in and trying to resolve these issues. Uh, it went, we were supposed to do it on Monday, Sunday night at 6 o'clock. Got a call from the chair saying, "No, we're not doing this." So, uh, we've tried, you know?
Well, maybe it's somebody other than the chair or the trustees, what can I talk to?
Can I?
Yeah, please, this is discussion, yeah.
So I will just say, I'm a little bit disappointed in us, in general. I feel like we've taken a lot of people's time to get to this point. I feel like this was a little bit of performance theater on our part and it's unfortunate. I've not wanted to go down this road with the trustees, I'm the one who did not vote for that. Um, because I, I, we all just circled back to where I started with this. Um, the, the one thing I will say though is, I wanna see this resolved with them. And I think if we're gonna talk about mediators between two sides who don't get along, I think it's not up to us to decide, I would say it's up to both sides of that conflict. We can clearly identify which are the sides of it and I think if they want counselors involved, they'd have to feel comfortable that the ones that we select would be impartial and that would be both sides, or at least as close as impartial as they could get. So I wouldn't say we pick, I'd say let both sides kind of agree to who they would want to mediate, because that's the only way it's gonna get anywhere. If it gets to one person up here who they think is biased towards one way or the other, it's not gonna do any bit of good.
Right, 'cause I feel no matter who we pick, I really do, I feel no matter who we pick, we're all gonna get hated and loved, or hated and loved and hated and, and, and it's a really hard choice and I'm not gonna lie.
I just don't-
And I feel uncomfortable.
It's gotta be somebody arbitrary.
I just wanna take issue, Sean, with something you said, this is not performance theater.
Maybe not from everybody, but yeah.
This was totally serious.
Maybe that's a little hard.
Everybody, everybody came here tonight with good intentions to pick people. My opinion changed when I saw this tonight.
Yeah.
It's kinda threatening.
I, I don't wanna throw anybody into the fire when we've now got the employees of the library and the trustees battling each other, now we've got both sides and we're gonna ask them to, "Oh hey, go into this mess."
I'll, I'll apologize and take that back, I just, I, I feel bad for the people's time that we've taken up.
But I, I don't think we wasted anybody's time because everyone was excellent and it doesn't mean we can't bring this back in the future, I just think that we gotta fix the problem.
Well, let's ask what Mr. Malholland has to say, if he's got any input at all.
Um, do you have anything to say, sir?
Just a couple of things, I'd be cautious about using the exception for legal counsel. Legal counsel is to provide advice to the body. It's not to be, and I'm not, I know you're not suggesting a subterfuge to be able to go into a session the public can't have access to. I'd be very cautious about doing that and I would not recommend that we do that.
Okay.
Certainly wouldn't reckon, if they asked me, I would've said, "I would not recommend that you do that." Uh, unfortunately, whether, whether it's unfortunate or not, for public bodies, we have an obligation to all of these people to have these discussions in public.
Mm-hmm.
That's one. Two, the other part of this is mediation only works when there's actually an agreement on both sides and somebody already said that here, to actually work things out. If there isn't, it's going no place. It's, uh, I was in my former career being a peacekeeper when there's no peace to keep. It's a futile effort. Um, so, um, that's my advice to you on that. They have to want to do this and you're right, they have to select who they want to be the person who they have confidence is actually neutral, to be able to have those discussions and to facilitate discussions of the concerns of one party and the other and then work them towards a conclusion of that. And again, Counselor Bouchard tried to do that and offered for the two of us to assist that and they, they chose not to do that and they may have good reasons, I mean, you know, that's for them to decide. We should not criticize them for the fact that they chose not to do that, that is up to them. If they want our help, as, as you know, we have no authority or any jurisdiction over them whatsoever. And we, we keep getting those emails and I'm saying that for everybody who's listening, we don't have the authority to go and impose anything upon them.
Right.
Our place is to help them wherever they ask for it. When they don't ask for it, then we stay out of their business, that's just the way the statute is written. And there, I would suggest there's good reasons for separation of libraries from the town governance. There's a whole lot of reasons for that, why it was created a long time ago and in almost, probably 99% of the communities in our state, this is not an issue. We have a problem recently in ours and obviously there's some, some friction in there and that's where we are today.
I just wanna see some resolve.
Right.
I wanna see them take baby steps. This is the biggest issue, number one. Number two, number three, let's deal with number one. Who are we gonna put in there, how do we wanna resolve it and what are the steps need to be done? Number two, this is our second biggest problem. What are the, you know, the rules say, what, how does it function? I, I just don't understand why we can't get there. And, and, you know, like I said, we're adults, we have to leave emotions and po, and, and, and preconceptions at the door and look at it as a problem. And this is a problem. And it really needs to be fixed, 'cause it's tearing our community apart.
It is, absolutely.
It really is and it's sad, it's just sad. And, and so I don't know what the next steps are on.
Yeah.
I just know that no matter what we pick, it's not gonna be the right pick.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor from Dan. Do I have a second? Can you repeat your motion again, Dan? It's been a little while.
Sorry.
I make a motion that the town council not appoint any alternates to the library Board of Trustees and that the March, in, that in March, the voters of Londonderry select who they want to be on the Lon, Londonderry Board of Trustees, library Board of Trustees. That's my motion.
How many people are up in March for the trustees?
I don't know, three, I believe, is it?
Two.
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 Two are coming up.
Christine Fitzgerald and Helen Holmery.
Yep.
That's two. And I don't know if even that's gonna fix what's going on.
Oh, Thomas.
Sure, just one thing.
Please, yeah.
All motions are supposed to be in the positive, so you might wanna say that we'll take, to take no action on the request for appointments. That would be appropriate and that way you're not making a motion in the negative.
Thank you.
If you'd wanna change the wording, to say to take no action on the request for appointments.
I make a motion that the town of Londonderry make, take no action uh, to appoint any alternates to the library Board of Trustees.
I have a motion from Dan.
Uh, discussion real quick. Um, Mr. Town Manager, do you know if we then make this motion, does this also prevent the library trustees from further implementing the alternates?
They don't have any authority to do that, they can request, they may request the governing body, in this case, the Board of Selectment Town Council, to appoint alternates. You are not required to do that. They cannot, they don't have any authority to appoint anybody, they, they just, only you can do that.
Just wanted to have clarification, thank you. I will second your notion, Dan. I have a second from Ted. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief votes in affirmative. I wanna thank everybody that came out and interviewed. Um, you are all excellent candidates. Um, I think that we just need to fix the situation at the library and I, I really feel badly for the employees at the library, this, this hurts my heart. So, um, I wanna get this fixed, so I am willing to volunteer to help if I can help at all, so. But I wanna thank everybody that came out and volun, and volunteered and that, uh, came up and submitted their, uh, applications for alternate, I appreciate it.
Okay. Next.
Next up, we have Pettingill Road TIF Advisory Board interview. Bill Me.
Um, Mr. Chair, while Mr. Me is joining you up there, I do wanna say that, um, we only received one application thus far for the two spots on there. Um, Mr. Me is a member of the Londonderry Housing and Development Authority, which does own property in the TIF district.
Okay.
So the board gets to choose whether he occupies, whether he is placed as a private citizen or as a representative of an organization that owns property in the TIF district.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, uh, Bill Me, 62 Shasta Drive, um, here. Volunteered to be on the TIF committee. Um, come December, would've been a resident of Londonderry for 40 years. Been retired for the last eight, prior to that, I had about 30 years' experience in finance and accounting, particularly in the construction industry. Um, serve on the redevelopment authority and our charge there is to try to get distressed properties onto the tax rolls at their, uh, best rate, which is what we're trying to do in the TIF district also, is to provide, uh, the tax income to the town. Open to any questions?
Any questions for council?
Where are the properties that the Housing Development Authority have in the TIF district?
We've got three, uh, empty lots on Harvey Road. I don't know the exact address numbers, but it's, uh, if you're familiar with Harvey coming from the airport and you go up the hill and the FAA has their, uh, beacons on the left-hand side. We've got three lots pretty much on the opposite side of the road there. Uh, not the world's best lots for trying to do anything with, but, uh, we have those.
Yeah, looks like it's a tax map, uh, 14 dash 421, 14410 and 144411.
Yeah, combined is about seven acres. Um, we also, uh, own a property on Navigator Road and we have a tenant in there that, um, generates about a million dollars worth of revenue to the town each year.
Didn't you say navigator?
Yes, I believe it's navigator, yeah. Yeah, it's the, uh, Enterprise Mobility.
Ten, ten navy.
Ten Navigator, yeah.
Ah. Any other questions?
If you had a choice to, um, pick, would you rather represent the citizency, the citizenry? Or would you rather represent the, um, the business? Like, if you had to pick one, so that, I guess, 'cause we're gonna put it up again, so-
Right.
It would be good to know which one you would prefer? Or do we put it up for both? I mean, that's kind of a question right now that we need to figure out.
You just want me to think about the fact it's hard to find people that are actually in the district owners and he is, it's easier to find a citizen, so it might be easier to put him in that.
Okay, okay, so he's coming in as that particular-
Well, there's a few, but-
Yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to-
Sure.
Understand this, I apologize. We never did this before, so I, I don't know much about how it works. Um, and what is their, their, uh, Mr. Manager, what is their, the, the, this board's, like, what is their call, what is their duty? Like, I don't even understand what they're gonna do for the TIF.
So they're, they're an advisory board and as you know, it's required by statute to have an advisory board. So the annual budget, they're supposed to approve that and they're also supposed to be reviewing the, the, uh, development plans as they come in and all the changes that occur and they're supposed to make recommendations to you on an annual basis on those items or when they come up. So their, their job is, basically they're a watch job and they, they provide advice to the district administrator, which is the town manager, and the governing body, which is you in terms of making decisions within that district.
Okay, so that's that new TIF district we just put in?
Yes.
Okay, and that doesn't go to planning, it comes to us?
That's right.
Okay.
So remember, that's the-
I'm sorry for being so ignorant, but-
That's, that's the spending of the, um, the increment.
Okay.
Right? So the, the, in terms of the planning board, they have their functions like they normally do when it comes to any other site plan or subdivision plan, it still has to go to the planning board, none of that changes. But in terms of spending the TIF funds and the, the operations within the TIF district that are funded through that, they provide advice to the district administrator and to the governing body.
Okay.
Such as the improvements that we had initially discussed when we were going through the TIF process. We mentioned traffic improvement, roadway improvements, that is the projects that you would-
Okay, I kind of assumed those things were kinda like off-site improvements that happened organically anyway and I, so this is above and beyond that scope? Okay, all right, thank you for clarification.
Any other questions?
Yes, uh, was there notification sent out to all the other business owners in the TIF district that they could apply to be on this?
We were hoping that would be a long list, but that did not turn out to be the case.
I think some-
And how many members are you looking for?
Well, we need three.
Three.
So we already have a counselor, Counselor Faber.
Okay.
Um, and then this would be presumably the, the business owner that, within the district, representing the business owner, because again, the, the housing authority, uh, and redevelopment authority owns property within it and then there's the citizen route that we're looking at.
And does the citizen need to live within that district or no?
No.
Okay.
Could be a budding to it and that-
Just wanna, uh, make sure on the clarification on it.
Have much residential in there and this is part of the problem, when you have, when you have a, a, uh, industrial development area, so it can be a budding property owners as well.
I know I did get a call from two businesses that they were afraid to get involved in it 'cause they thought that there was gonna be a lot that they were gonna have to do, so. Maybe there's, they're watching or they'll find out, but they were like interested and then they were like, "Dad, what do you know about it?" And I was like, "I don't know anything about it, really." Um-
They, they don't have regularly scheduled meetings, it's when they need to, I mean, we need, we should be meeting with them. We should've met with them a month ago to say, "Okay, well, what's the proposed budget for the next year?" But of course, they haven't been created yet, uh, they haven't been staffed yet, so, uh, obviously we can't do that. And then when there's development projects, so they don't normally have regularly scheduled meetings, at least that's been in my experience, we had two diff, TIF districts where I was before, two different boards and they only meet as needed and it's usually- and they only meet as needed and it's usually not that often, depending upon how much activity you have going on within it.
Okay, thank you for that, I'll let them know.
So back to you, Bill. Do you want to be a citizen or do you want to be a business owner within the board?
Well, a lot of what the Tiff District hopes to accomplish is what the committee that I'm on hopes to accomplish. We take distressed properties, try to turn them into positive, tax-positive properties. The Tiff District is to take the existing properties that are up there and use the Tiff funds for infrastructure projects, you know. Maybe you gotta widen Pettingill Road. Maybe you gotta change the intersection at Ray Resort Drive. As I know, the state has asked the town in the past to do traffic studies and our committee was able to put forward the funds to take care of that. And I'm sure there's gonna be more of that in the future. And we're also, the Tiff District now is up into the other side, if you will, the technology park area. And those are all gonna require infrastructure expenses and other things. So it kind of goes together.
So I think we're appointing him as the owner.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
All right, so I just want to thank you for stepping up as business owner.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's great.
Being retired and elderly, you don't have much else to do, so.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Lunedary Town Council appoint Bill Me to the Pettingill Road Tiff Advisory Board.
Second. I heard Ted first. So I have a motion from Dan, a second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the appointment of Dave Wally as the tree warden. Go ahead, sir.
So towns are not required to have a tree warden, but most of them do. And I would suggest that we have one here for the purposes that are outlined in the statute, R S A two thirty-one, chapter two thirty-one, in terms of managing trees within the town's right-of-way. And when those should be pruned or cut, anybody who wishing to do that must get permission from the tree warden and there's a hearing process under which that must occur. So my suggestion is, and usually in many communities, it is the road agent or the DPW director that performs that function because they manage our rights away anyway. It doesn't have to be, but it does make sense. There's obviously a lot of synergies there to do that. So I am proposing that our DPW Director, Dave Wally, be appointed as the tree warden for the town.
Any discussion?
I think Dave knows his trees pretty well in town.
So I will move that the Lunedary Town Council hereby, oh, sorry. Where is that sheet? There we go. Do you need a motion? Yeah, go ahead. I picked up the wrong sheet.
You weren't going to accidentally put him on the Tiff District.
We don't have a sheet. I will move that we appoint Dave Wally as the tree warden.
I have a motion from Sean.
Second.
Second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you, Dave, for volunteering.
Yes, because it is unpaid. I told him he can collect as many acorns within the right-of-way that the squirrels have not already taken. And that could be his payment for his duties. And of course, he'll be rewarded in the afterlife, as the Romans would say, in some fashion.
All right, next up, before we move on to the public hearing, I have a special presentation from Bob Slater. I saw Bob come in. Bob would like to present a proposal to the council about the Reverend Morrison House. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, rest of the council. I don't know if it's a presentation, it's just a bit of information on a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago with with Councilman Bouchard, the town manager, and some of the Lions folks kind of went through where you, where you folks stand. I know I had talked to Sean a couple of weeks ago as well. After the meeting, it was discussed of possibly trying to put a warrant article forward this March for just under a million dollars to try to open, open the doors. The problem you've got there is, and as of late, we've, we've found out that there's mold in there. We don't know what the the scope of that is throughout the building. So there's, there's a lot of things, you know, a lot of balls in the ears with this building. As you know, to, to get an accurate number as we've done on the school side, and we hate to do it, but it's not fair to go, come to the taxpayers, put it on the warrant without them knowing what the ultimate cost is to open the door. You'd hate to come in there with just under a million dollars and get into a project and see it's another million or two million or three million. So a lot of people question us on the school side. You know, why, why spend ninety thousand dollars? Well, we've got to get engineered plans to twenty percent conceptual as we're doing with the joint venture with, with the town next door, trying to bring this forward in March for district office. And, you know, we got to a twenty percent drawing and renderings and then we sent it out for pricing. That gets us to step A. Now, we've had two meetings and made some changes because of cost and we've moved forward to fifty percent drawings. That will get us to, you know, drawings where they can get, hopefully, a very accurate GMP, you know, gross maximum price for the project. And this is a new structure, you know, added on next door. So that's the reason for spending up to ninety thousand, to get structural engineer, to get electrical engineer, HVAC, to get these drawings so we can get accurate bids. So we're working towards that. Same thing we've done in, in the past with schools and that. So my, watching, you know, all the, all the balls in the air here and being involved since three years ago, crawling under the building and trying to find the reasoning for the floor and that and couldn't quite get to it without opening the floor. And then everybody's got ideas and I know a lot of people in town would like to save the building if all possible. So Dave Wally, a couple of years ago, by the council, went out and did a, you know, a really nice strategic plan, accurate details from Weston and Sampson. And then as of late, last fall, Arkove was hired by the council to go out and do another walkthrough and come up with a way to try to open the building, save the building and what that cost would be. So I think you had a max on, on Weston and Sampson of about thirty-five, three point five million and Arkove was slightly over one point five. Being in the business for forty-plus years, you're somewhere in the middle there probably. But there's a lot of unknowns to this building. It's not like a fresh set of blueprints, fresh, you know, foundation to put a building on and tie into existing electrical. So you can kind of wipe out all the unknowns because it's there, right? It's all new. So just thinking aloud, I thought I'd come in and just share with you guys. You know, we, we spent some money to get to where we are with district office and hopefully, we'll have a, you know, we'll have a solid number coming into budget season before bond season and be able to work with the town. And I do truly appreciate all the work with town staff and, and the council to try to make this happen for district office. I think it's a wonderful thing that the two, two governments can work this closely together to try to provide for one another and save our taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. But meanwhile, on to this. You're probably looking at spending some money to get some accurate pricing. So I don't know what that dollar amount is, this is a different type of structure. You, you gotta get certain people that can look at this. They've got to reach out to certain people with, with these style buildings and, and that to get you some numbers. So I would highly recommend that you, you know, talk with the town manager or direct him to see what that cost may be. Possibly you could get numbers and, and pricing before, you know, bond time or, or budget season ends before we go to deliberative. I don't know what the lead times are, starting this late in the season, but the town manager has a lot of his resources, you know, available to him. And I think that would be the best way. So if the number is two point four, two point three, three point four. Because the problem what has happened now is if you want to open the door to all the nonprofits, which I know there's probably quite a few in town that would love to use the facility, the town's on the hook, you're liable. So if you don't have everything, and, and like I said, I would help out with some of the concrete work, you know, it costs. As I told Dave back when he first did this, I don't mind doing that. But until I have a design plan stamped by a structural engineer, I'm, I'm not gonna do a thing in the building. Because it's, I don't want the town on the hook. So electrical, you're gonna need to go through an electrical engineer, you're gonna need to make sure everything is up to code. HVAC up to code. Sprinklers if needed, I know there's two stories to that. I don't know, I'm not a code enforcer. But I just know if you're gonna open the door on a day-to-day basis for these nonprofits and people to use this, you need to make sure the town has a safe building that people can use. So that's where you get into that. And to counsel Paul, your idea of raising money is a great idea, but once we have a number, it's, it's good, say it's two point five and, and the voters approve it, right? Now we could start fundraising. Now you could put it in for, up at the state level, you know, for some grants and that. But until we know what that money is, because if you put it up for grant money now, you may raise a hundred thousand, two hundred. But what if it doesn't go forward? I, I don't know how that works, it's, it's kind of out of my realm. But to fundraise is a great idea, once the voters say yes, now you could stop fundraising and say, hey, we've got the voters' approval. That would bring the cost down that you would need to spend on the building. So there's, they're all great ideas.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I, I do agree fundraising is definitely the way to go with this. But like you just said, about the concrete, right? So if the town puts out a kind of outcry to, you said HVAC, master electricians, do we need plumbers as well?
You're gonna need plumbing, you're gonna need everything to build a building.
Put an outreach, outreach to them or an outcry to say, you know, who would be willing to donate time? Obviously, we're not gonna ask them to donate all the goods, but at least the time, because that's the most expensive part in construction. If we could get things like that donated, that has to come after we have the plans, correct?
Yeah, because, because what, let me back up just a little bit. The town's not set up to run and build a project like this. We don't have the personnel, that's like the school side. We work with construction managers or a general contractor. So during this process, the council or building committee, whatever you set up to do this, would select a construction manager to work, you know, with that committee. Once the drawings are put together and scoped out, now they can go out to bids and anyone from the town, town council from, can recommend, hey, can you try, you know, this electrician? Can you try this HVAC? Now he's got blueprints. It's a town project, he might have said, I'll help you out. Now he's got a set of blueprints, he might say, I, you know, this is a two hundred thousand dollar job, I'll do it for a hundred and eighty thousand. But you'll have two or three other bids to make sure that number is the right number, too.
I understand that process. I'm just thinking like, so I remember fishing game. And he happened to be here today, but, you know, they did all of the Grange.
Yep. Brand-new building.
That was like thirty thousand dollars they donated
Sure.
to fix all the electricity.
Sure.
One of their members was a master electrician, like that would be awesome
Yep.
if we could find that same sort of thing that would do stuff.
Exactly, but if you, you get the CM on board, construction manager, you get all your plans done, you go out for bid price, the people say yes on this dollar amount at voting. Now the construction manager can go to work for the council and for the taxpayers by going out to bid. This is a probably three to six-month ordeal to get plans done. Then the inviter would be probably an open book. So whatever, that building committee would get to see the bids, select the bidder.
I'm just trying to shorten the process a little bit because it's been kicked down the road so long.
I, I know, but.
I really would like to see some step being taken. So I just asked one more question. The school already has this manage, would you call it a building manager?
We do not. We, we, with a new building, it's a little different.
Okay.
We, we've sent it out for two estimates. Now we're going in for our fifty percent drawing. In the next six to nine weeks, we will select a construction manager GC with that committee. So that way it'll work through the budget, it'll be, come in at budget season and we'll work through the voting and that, so.
I was just trying to figure out a way to maybe save some time and some money as if you guys are already in the process.
Right.
Might be able to encourage them to look at this project as well.
Yeah, we started what, I was in front of you guys in June and, and started in July. Now we're in October, you know, heading to budget season. So it's, it's a tall task for the town manager, but I, you know, like I said, he's, he knows a lot of people in the industry as well and the work he's done and what he's shared with us. And Sean, I don't know if you want to hit on any of that.
I'm expecting the price by the fifteenth of October, so next, it should be next week. Some numbers. So he's done a couple of things. He's already talked about the fire suppression companies that would do that work. Some, some of the architectural work, which shouldn't be a whole lot, but there needs to be some. So this is already in progress. We've created the survey, sent it out to the Lions Club to take a look at and provide feedback to me so we can send it out to our nonprofits to find out what the level of interest is. We go to the voters, we need to say, why are we doing this, what for? Hopefully, we'll have nonprofits that'll say, yes, we want to use it, here's the reason. This is how much we would use it, nights of the week we would use it, what we need it for, so on and so forth. I told them when the construction manager that he talked about, Reark is the company I'm asking them to do that. I'm looking at finishing that first floor only. Making the first floor only operational and the second floor would not be, at least not at this time. That could be done some other time. But the big thing is they get the hall open so it can be used. So that's the objective. You're gonna have to do some things up in the upstairs to deal with wiring and clear out the mold and make sure the, the, you know, the roof is sound because there is a couple, some water stains you can see when you walk through there. Make sure that's taken care of. Got to make sure the septic system work, that has not been investigated at this point. It's not on municipal sewer and the HVAC system's probably gonna have to be replaced, but it has to be looked at. And the plumbing issues and all of that. So minimal scope to get the building open, but it's gonna be, it's not gonna be nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, whatever that amount is that I've seen floating around lately here. That's not gonna happen at that price. So we're following the process just because Bob was actually helping me with this is to what, what the process that we're going through and we have to do it very quickly. We are behind the eight ball because as you indicated, with the school district office building, we got a little bit more lead time, but even that's, we're sort of, you know, rushed to get through that, to get done. So I'm trying to do the same thing so that we can get a warrant article, at least give you the option to present a warrant article to the voters, so you know what that dollar amount looks like. That's the goal, that's what I'm striving for and these things are already in motion to make that happen, hopefully.
Mr. Town Manager, are you also having the handicap accessibility of the building being looked at as well?
Yes. They're taking the reports that have already been created, that we've already spent money on and that's already provided quite a bit of the information that they need. There was a plan for some work out front, we're not, we're not doing.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of civil work that was planned.
Right, we're not, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
Right now, the scope I've gave them is to get the building, the, the X-ray of the building secure. So they don't have water coming in, deal with the mold issue, mold issue. Make sure the wiring meets code requirements and the plumbing, of course. And then get that first floor, I have to deal with the floor, that first floor operational and can be used. And the upstairs will not be able to be occupied until we do additional work at some other time.
Would it make?
The scope.
Would it make sense to hook into the sewer line at the road or no?
No, because it's more complicated than that. You have to either go up to the school across the street, across Route one twenty-eight, you're gonna add a lot of costs. If we have to do things to the septic system, it makes sense to update the septic system. Otherwise, you're pumping uphill, you're looking at grinder pumps and far more expense than I think we want to get ourselves into.
So the sewer pump, sewer line doesn't go down mammoth there?
It doesn't.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
It's either at here or at Matthew Thornton.
Okay.
So we have to cross the roadway and that.
And go up, right.
Right, just adds all kinds of costs and it just makes it unfeasible. You know, we have.
Just finding out questions that other people might be thinking about, so, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, because we looked at it. I actually asked that question, I went to our sewer folks and said, hey, why don't we just tie into the system? I realize it's a slope issue and it just would not be cost-effective. And the septic system will work, it has worked for all these years and it'll work here.
It'd be quite a distance to go with, for a pipe.
Right, and the septic system may be fine, maybe there's nothing we have to do, but we need to at least assess that.
Of course.
So I think an important thing to call out, and you had mentioned it in there, but in the conversations I had with you and Bob about this, is that the assessments that we'd done before were not a waste. They helped contribute towards what we're doing today.
A big win. Yeah, yeah, a lot of the work we would have to do otherwise has now been done. Now it's a matter of taking that and as Bob indicated, there's a design piece of this. And as Bob indicated, there's a design piece of this. We're not, we're not building a new building, but you, you have to have an electrical plan. Someone has to draw that out. I mean, I think you understand that. And you have to, it's probably going to require a fire suppression system. And that's something the CM is going to work with our fire department because again, it's going to be occupied basically for a commercial purpose or allowing people to use the space. So we're assuming that, so we're working on getting the price now. If fire tells us, nope, the code, you don't have to do that. I don't think that's going to be the case, then we won't. But we have to follow the rules, just like every other business or residential property in the town.
Bob, thank you for bringing it to our attention. I asked Bob to come and present it to everybody so that everyone could hear it and the public could hear it. Because I think, you know, after that last meeting, there was a lot of people like, what are we going to do? And I really thank you, Bob, for stepping up and giving us some options that we can actually put something on the ballot and let the voters vote. Because I still feel like that money issue is tight. 2.5, I don't know. But, you know, it is what it is. We got to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide what they want to do with the building. So at least let's us do that.
And the best part about this, and you did this with the school buildings, is this gives us a realistic number. It's not a number that's going to go on the ballot and then, well, we need 2 million more. It's going to be a realistic number. We're going to take the time to do that. So thank you.
That's what I heard the last meeting when this was discussed from community members and, and it sounds like there's a, you know, a real interest to open this, you know, at the, the Safeway. And just so everybody's aware of how much we're going to, you know, put into this building and that and make it usable. So. And I think there's ways of saving money. Once you get to the point, like, like the town manager said, you know, you come up with a figure, then you could start some fundraising to offset, you know, we're doing the same thing at the school with a capital program, you know, trying to raise money in other ways. So you've got to do that legwork. You got to spend a few dollars to get to that point. So then you can lock it in and then see, see what our voters have to say, so.
And I really like your suggestion with using the GC, you know, or construction manager, either what if you want to call it. Because that allows what you want to do to happen because then they can put it out to bid with plans and people can volunteer to do it like at cost or at, and then they have plans to work off of. Yeah, because I know that people had said to you and I that they would be willing to do that. And then you have, actually have plans to do that, too. So I, once again, thank you for stepping up and thank you for coming today. I just wanted to present it to everybody so everyone can have the same thing.
I know people, a lot of people have passion for this and it's been sitting a long time. Dave did a tremendous amount of work. You folks did, you know, with our cove. So to Sean's point, I think we're somewhere, we're going to be somewhere in between them, too. That, that took a lot of the work off the plate for the town manager so he can get you something sooner than later. So hope it all works out.
The good thing is electricians can go and say, okay, I need this many, linear feet of wire, this many sheets of sheet rock. And if people want to donate that or parts of that, now we'll actually know because it'll be spelled out in there. How much of that needs to be done? Here's the electrical plan. Can you do this? Well, I can't do all of it, but I can do this part. Great. Then we'll have that and they can, then they know what we're asking for, from them.
Right. And the other part is if, if he hires an electrician or he asks for this and no, all of a sudden, when he needs it, it can't, they can't help. You've got other numbers there. So you're not going to be chasing people around town either. Everybody has good intentions. Sometimes when the timing isn't right, they're just not available. So doing it this way and then looking for those favors if they're available and when will help us out and hopefully, you know, be another great community event to look back on. So just some thoughts. Thank you, folks.
Yes, Bob, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, this will get people answers or something. We've been kicking around for three years now, so it's, I'm glad to get to the end of this.
Up next is a public hearing, receiving public input discussing the act upon regarding the proposed discontinuation of a portion of Madden Road. Ms. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as a reminder, as I highlighted last time, Madden Road is a classic road in the area of Exit 4A. So Ash Street extension and North High Street, that area. This road is not in use, hasn't been in use for some time. There's also an approved development going in there that has no use for this roadway. So the town is requesting that you utilize your authority to discontinue it. And this is a hearing. We already had the first reading, so I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions from the council? I will accept the motion to open.
Do we have to open a public?
I'm doing it right now. I will accept the motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Sean.
Second.
Second by Deb. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative? Anyone from the public wish to discuss Madden Road? Good evening, Ray.
Ray Breslin, 3 Gary Drive. I wasn't aware of this, but now I am aware of this because it's on the agenda. I would like to say that there are quite a few roads in the town of Londonderry, including this one here. That is in the town of Londonderry. It may start in Derry. But most of it is in Londonderry. Back in the day, before 93 was here, it went all the way across. But discontinuance of this road, so then the road and the property becomes the owner of who? I would ask. I would assume the surrounding property owner that is doing this development. Property is valuable. Right of ways are valuable. This is a right of way. We talk about trails and so forth. Very good idea. People like to get out and walk on this. Back in the day, I walked on it. A lot of other people did. And now we're going to discontinue it. And I assume it's going to become the owner, that property will become the surrounding property owners will belong to them. I think when we're looking at something like this, we should consider the value of a right of way. I've heard people bring up that question and discuss about there's a lot of right of ways in the state of New Hampshire and in Londonderry also. Property is valuable. We have gas lines going through town. We have power lines, many going through town, all of which are called right of ways. Some folks may believe that a utility company has a right of way. They own the land. In some cases, that is the case. Not always. In some cases, it's agreement that a utility company asks for a right of way across a piece of property so that it can run their lines or whatever. But the property, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, still can remain in the ownership of the property owner. They gave a right of way to the property. My point is here's, property is valuable. And we have to be very conscious of how we dispose our property. This particular thing may not be that big of an issue. Because unfortunately, nobody's getting any use out of it anyway. It's been dead-ended because they put 93 in years ago. But I believe it is, at least at this point, a town of Londonderry right of way. And apparently it's going to be disposed of.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ray.
Anybody else want to speak on Madden Road?
Sure.
Anne Champa, 28 Wedgwood Drive. I'm very intimately involved in this because I remember maybe 10, 12 years ago, Councilor Jim Butler and I started walking that after seeing a plan. I mean, I should say a map of the area and it said, you know, Old Rum Trail. That's why I picked up the name for the Exit 4A, the Old Rum Trail. Madden Road is the Old Rum Trail. So when you, when you take away the Madden Road, you're taking away the original Old Rum Trail. Just remember that. But we do have the new exit off of 93 in its memory, I guess. It's not in the same place. It's a little farther to the north. We all know that. But at least we'll have some memory of it. And also, what I want to say, if you went out there, you would see beautiful stone walls lining the Old Rum Trail. So I hope those stone walls can be preserved somewhere on the property as a memory of that road. Well, we'll, we'll remember it because the name, it's kind of sticks, the Old Rum Trail on the exit. So don't forget about those stone walls that line that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Anybody else have public comment? Seeing that, I'll accept the motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Motion by Sean.
Second.
Second by Deb. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative? Bring it back to us. What do we want to do?
I have a question for Steph. I'm seeing on satellite imagery, it looks like there's two potentially cell phone towers along Madden Road right now. How will those then be accessed in the future? Has that been discussed?
It's been discussed through the subdivision and site plan process for the conditionally approved project for this area. And so that access will be maintained.
Okay, wonderful.
Any other questions? What do we want to do?
I move that the Londonderry Town Council hereby approve the discontinuance of a portion of Madden Road as presented pursuant to RSA 231:43 and RSA 231:44 and further authorize staff to record the discontinuance with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Sean. Oh, second from Ted, sorry. Second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. New business. Discuss and set a public hearing for October 20, 2025 regarding proposed changes to the criteria for the elderly tax exemption. Mr. Hamilton.
I need to step down.
Okay, okay. Let the record show that Counselor Paul stepped down.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council. This is a, an item to schedule that public hearing for October 20th and to talk to you about the recommendations from the assessing department for changes to the elderly and disability exemption amounts and the qualification standards for those. As part of the policy of the council, we are to give you regular recommendations on these changes. They typically, like this year, coincide with a revaluation of property. The value of the property in Londonderry, especially residential properties that are typically having these kinds of exemptions applied to them, have increased significantly in value over the last two years. That was the last opportunity that the council had to change the, the level of the assessment that is reduced by the exemptions. And so there are two proposals. Both of them relate to the amount of exemption and the income and asset limits. Probably taking up the asset and income limits first. There has been inflation over the last two years since the council had adopted a revised income limit for single individuals and for married individuals and the amount of assets that they may possess in order to qualify for these exemptions. The prior amount for the single individual was 48,400. We're recommending that that be increased by approximately 5.75% to 51,200. The married income limit, which is currently at 59,600, we're recommending that that be increased by approximately 5.75% to a new limit of 63,000. And the assets, which does not include the equity that a person might have in their home, but it captures the value of all other physical and monetary assets that a person might have, such as bank accounts, retirement accounts, annuities, those types of assets or other property that they might own. We're recommending that the current 162,300 be increased by approximately 5.75% to 171,600. The second item is the amount of the benefit. And that will correspond closely with the changes in value. Primarily, we look at the changes in value in two different ways. One is what has happened within the class of property, which the, so these are residential properties. So we look to single-family home changes in value, condominium property changes in values and manufactured housing unit changes in value. And so overall, the all taxable property increased by about 14.5% over the last two years. But the single-family category of property increased at a little bit under 16% or 15.9%. Condominium units, they increased in value at about 19.8%. And manufactured housing units, they increased at a rate of about 16.7%. And so looking at the overall change in value is important, but what's even more critical in my estimation is what happens to the actual properties that are being exempted under this program? What is the change in value for those properties? And so when we look at that discrete set of properties across the categories, they are pointing us in the direction of about 17%. So we're recommending a 17% approximate increase in the exemption value by category. So that means for the disabled, we would see the current amount of the exemption go from 175,000 to 205,000. For the first category of elderly, from 65 years to 74 years, we would see that change in the same amount from 175,000 to 205,000. Excuse me. For the middle elderly age category from 75 to 79, that would see the current amount change from 225,000 exemption to 265,000. And for the highest age category of 80-plus, that would change from the current $300,000 exemption amount to 350,000. Now, we look at this in two ways. We want to try and, as much as we can, maintain the same bang for the buck. We, this is not an exemption program that's tuned to individual properties. So there's no way to know exactly what will happen. But we have looked at closely the number of people who are, have all of their taxes covered by the exemption and other tax credits that they receive. And so I've broken that down by category to see that for the disability, of the 15 people who received the disability exemption, six of them have all of the taxes covered currently. So in 2024, they paid no tax bill. And under the proposal, there are six properties that would similarly. Now, I can't guarantee that it's the same six properties, but it's the same net impact for that category. And that same analysis was undertaken for the three elderly categories. 13 in the youngest elderly. Um, thirteen, um, in the youngest elderly category of sixty-five to seventy-four, uh, last year paid no taxes. Um, under the proposed amounts, uh, thirteen would, would pay no taxes. So there'd be no net change in the number. Um, the middle elderly category, um, eleven, um, currently or in twenty-twenty-four, had all of their taxes covered by, uh, this exemption amount, and eleven would be the net result for twenty-twenty-five. And in fact, in the eighty-plus category, um, in twenty-twenty-four, it was thirty-eight people who had all of their taxes covered, but, um, under the new, um, breakdown, it would be thirty-nine people. And there is a, there's a strong correlation between the people who, um, in twenty-twenty-four had no tax bill, um, and in twenty-twenty-five will have no tax bill. But there's no way to know or, or guarantee that that would be the outcome for the individuals who receive these benefits as they change from category to category as they age. And so the whole set of, of people who are there may be different from, from year to year. To help to put it into context, I've provided, um, a comparison to other communities, um, of a peer set. There is information available for every community within the state, but what the exemption amount is in the town of Acworth may be interesting, but it's probably not going to help you to come to a good decision about what, uh, the qualification standards and the exemption amount should be in the town of Londonderry. Uh, so, um, I've selected, and this is the same peer set that we've used for, uh, the last, uh, two recommendations that were made prior to this one. So, uh, we are looking at the towns of Hooksett, Merrimack, Exeter, the city of Portsmouth, the town of Hollis, Hudson, Wyndham, Amherst, Bedford, Derry, the city of Nasher, and the city of Manchester. To make sure that the, uh, the recommended amounts, um, are relatively consistent with the similar types, um, of communities and those that are just generally nearby. Um, obviously, Manchester and Nasher are decidedly different than, uh, Londonderry, but, uh, they are close in proximity. And so, um, I've calculated the, um, average benefit amount and the median benefit amount for that peer set of communities, and that, um, is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred. Uh, for the youngest elderly category, one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six median. So, um, and the same, uh, for the seventy-five to seventy-nine, uh, the average benefit amount for that peer set is two hundred and seven thousand, and the median benefit amount is a hundred and seventy thousand. So, uh, those, uh, compare very favorably, uh, for the town of Londonderry, um, being, um, at the higher end of these, uh, communities. And for the highest age category, the average benefit amount for the peer set is two hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred, and the median benefit amount is three, two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, and that's, uh, significantly below the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar recommended, um, exemption amount. Um, the income and asset limits are also shown for that peer set, um, and, uh, they're, they're very supportive of, uh, the income and asset limits for, um, for most of the communities, although the average is, uh, a little bit higher on the, um, on the asset side for the average benefit asset limit is two hundred and ten thousand seven hundred, but the median is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred. And Londonderry's is, uh, the recommended is a hundred and seventy-one six hundred. Uh, there, there is one community that has a different, um, exemption limit, uh, for the assets for married couples than, um, than for single couple, uh, single person. Um, and so that, um, distorts the, um, average and the median for the married asset limits. But that's our recommendation for, uh, for this year, for the changes. Um, and I think, uh, the, uh, the public hearing, um, on these issues, uh, would best be scheduled for the October twentieth meeting. That will give us plenty of time to get these, uh, recommended and then voted, uh, changes to the Department of Revenue Administration so that they can integrate it into the tax rate setting for the year.
Any questions?
Do we know how many more? I don't know if you've looked into how many more people this may affect or not if we increase the asset limits?
So the asset limit is, I, I mean, I can only, um, I can only talk anecdotally about it because we, thankfully, we don't know what everybody, um, who would qualify by age category in the town has for assets. But we can look at the people who apply. Invariably, the people who do qualify by the income limits easily qualify by the asset limits.
Okay. I guess I just think about, you know, someone may have a potentially significant IRA, but they're, it may not be drawing out past this income limit, uh, limit, and then would qualify. You know what I mean?
I, I do, but we don't see that, we don't see that pattern, um, anecdotally.
Gotcha. Um, and then what happens, I guess, on the income limit side? If you were married, but your spouse had passed, are you then put at the single income limit then?
So you, you're maintained at the, at the married.
You are married, uh, maintained at the married one, okay. So that helps those individuals where their spouse had passed. Um, was there any thought put into, um, I know in the past we had talked about where Wyndham at an eighty-plus level has a full exemption. Had there been any further discussion on that?
So, um, we had, in the last, I believe, recommendation that we made in twenty-twenty-three, we provided a detailed analysis. Um, there, it really is, um, there's not a significant difference in the cost to, um, the taxpayers of the town. It would increase the burden, but not, uh, by an overwhelming amount. I don't have the dollar amount.
Right. I mean, I, I'm seeing up above, you're seeing about thirty-eight people, homes would qualify compared to the total of eighty-three of them before. So it looks like a delta of fifty?
Uh, so in numbers, yes, but in impact, uh, you know, some of those are ten or fifteen or eighteen dollars in taxes. The, the ones that get, that are getting a tax bill, many of those are impractically small. I, I even considered, um, you know, reporting to you rather than people who had a zero tax bill, people who had less than fifty dollars, some, uh, de minimis amount. But, um, I think zero is, you know, that it's a, it's something that people attach to. I don't have to pay taxes, so that becomes important, uh, to them. But I can certainly, uh, for the twentieth, I can come back and report to you what that exact dollar, uh, amount would be to have a full, uh, exemption of the taxes for the eighty-plus category.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We will schedule the public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Let the record show that Counselor Paul is rejoining us. Up next, discuss and set a public hearing for October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five related to the building permit and land use application fee schedule. Ms. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, this is a first reading for you all this evening. Again, we're looking to schedule a hearing on this matter for the twentieth of October. Um, so in your packet, you'll see that we've put together, uh, some proposed updates to both our land use fee schedules. So that's, generally speaking, your site plan and subdivision applications and things that, and applications that go through the planning department, as well as, um, the, what we call the building permit fee schedule. So building permits, electrical, plumbing, mechanical. So both the planning department and the building department, um, went through a pretty thorough analysis. Again, all of that's in your packet. We looked, uh, at a regional level, uh, to compare our fees to the surrounding towns that are, you know, closest to us in both population and the volume of permits that they're seeing. Uh, and essentially, we found that in some instances, Londonderry is up to forty percent lower in our fees, both, uh, fee schedules. And so we're looking to right-size that essentially. Uh, this does a couple of things. One, of course, right-sizing us to where we need to be, um, again, on that regional level and where we are in terms of volume and, and need. And then it also, um, supports the town's initiative that you've heard about, um, which is the Open Gov permitting software. It's, it's going to support, um, some cost recovery associated with that permitting software. Um, so I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like, or I can take your initial questions, whatever your preference.
Any questions in the council?
Kelly, I just have one comment. I think these are long overdue. All right? I like the way that you've changed some of these permit fees to benefit the community. I like the fact that when you look at a new construction, single family, instead of the six dollars per thousand, we're doing it by square foot. That's a lot more fair, I think. It's, it's just the right thing to do, and I appreciate that. I think it's just great.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that comment, that's a good point. Um, this really, the way in which these fees are, are proposed, um, really gives the, both the town and the applicant a more, um, defined fee as it relates to the scope of their project. Um, so that was also the intent in this update. As you just pointed out, the fees really don't align with the scope of the projects, um, even on a small scale. They're just not, they're not at where they need to be. And again, to your point, in my research, uh, some of these fees haven't been updated in almost a decade, uh, which is significantly overdue. Um, so absolutely agree with your comment.
Well, I like the fact that when you're looking at it, instead of an individual coming in and saying, well, my project's going to cost, uh, thirty thousand, and the next person comes in, it's basically the same thing, but he's, he's saying his is costing him twenty thousand. Now we're going by square footage, so everybody's paying the same.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Um, Kelly, um, I kind of want to echo what Dan said, but, so because this wrapped so long, do you guys have a plan? Are you going to do, um, look at these fees like every three to five years, make sure you're in line with all, like, is there going to be a set schedule to make sure we don't fall behind again?
Absolutely. My intention would be to assess these three to five years. Um, I think five years would be the maximum. In my experience in other communities, generally, um, your staff is just paying attention, and generally speaking, um, and if we're seeing the need to increase, then we would do so. Again, we're looking at our budding communities as well as, um, ourselves.
Right, no, you did an awesome job. I just want to make sure we don't fall into that pit again.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we should continue looking at, not just leave it as is if you approve this.
I would suggest a slightly different barometer. We should look at what the other committee's doing just for some comparison purposes, but we don't have to keep up with the challenges, right? So the purpose of this is to offset the cost of providing this service. The property taxpayer should not have to subsidize, they already do subsidize it to a certain degree, and it'll probably always be that way, but making sure that ratio from what the property taxpayer has to pay for the building department and the planning department is at least partially offset by fees. So that should be our barometer. As, as our costs go up with that, our fees should be commensurate with that. So the reason why we're proposing this change is because of the, the software we're putting into, into place shouldn't be paid for by taxpayers, it should be paid for by those who use the service.
Right.
So that's what, that's why we're doing that. I think that should be our barometer, and we should be careful about, you know, just, and I know you're not suggesting that, just because Merrimack or Salem did this, that we should do it too.
But my goal is, is if you're not paying attention, then you say, oh, my gosh, I forgot to do this, like we did, you know, for a long period of time. So we'll have a trigger of some sort that says every five years you gotta, or every three years.
What you're going to be seeing is that every year, we should be reviewing all of our fees. And that may not be in depth.
Okay.
But every year, we should be doing that. That should be done prior to the budget process. And the reason why it should be done prior to the budget process is we should be able to determine what new revenues we're going to bring in that will offset taxes. So when we go and decide how much we're going to spend on different things, how much that is being offset by other fees. So there's a cycle. I, I consider this as part of the budget cycle.
Okay.
Uh, and you do it in that process. So every year, we should be looking at our fees. It may be that we're not going to touch building fees this year because they're in line with the cost that we have, but these, whatever these other fees are, we're going to look at updating some of those. But it should be looked at in an annual basis, and again, you make only changes where you deem it appropriate to do so.
But good job. Thank you, Kelly.
I do.
Good.
Kelly, how, I guess how do I want to phrase this question? How many years do you think we might have been out of whack compared to other communities with the, the differences and what they're charging?
Uh, I think to the town manager's point, we're not necessarily just comparing what, how we relate to other communities. It's also comparing how much revenue we're generating and, you know, how to make up the costs of staff time and processing times and all of that, and if we're having a software program, that we need to fund as well.
Just thinking back upon, you know, past ten, fifteen, twenty years of the development that we've seen within town, that we could have been capturing on a better level of revenue for the town?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not going to disagree that, um, these should have been updated sooner. Uh, but I can't put a number on, on that as far as how much.
Phrase this another way. When were, when were these last updated?
Uh, in, in most recent, I think we've updated some of the land use fees, like the butter fee, for example, as recent as two years ago, but in some instances, some of the building permit fees, some of our electrical fees, um, five-plus years ago, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we will schedule this for a public hearing in October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Next up, discuss and act upon a resolution, two zero two five dash twenty, acceptance of unanticipated revenue for the two thousand twenty-six household hazardous waste grant.
Um, Ms.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, this is the annual grant that the Department of Engineering and Environmental Services gets to support the Fall Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. For those of you who might not know, we partner with Derry. Derry has a collection day in the spring, and we have a collection day in the fall, but residents can go to either one of them. And this is, this grant from the state, we get it on an annual basis. This year, it is for three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And the reason that there is two motions here is that, um, the documentation necessary to get this grant is very, very specific and requires specific authorization by vote for the town manager to, uh, sign the grant.
Any questions?
I will move that the Londonderry Town Council hereby accepts fiscal year twenty twenty-six household hazardous waste grant in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars under RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, uh, three, in parentheses, B.
I have a motion from Sean, second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative.
I'll move that the town manager, Sean Mahullen, is duly authorized to enter into contracts or agreements on behalf of the town of Londonderry with the state of New Hampshire and any of its agencies or departments, and further is authorized to execute any documents which may, in his judgment, be desirable or necessary to affect the purpose of this vote.
Motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Up next, present, discuss, and set a public hearing of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five on proposed town charter amendments, eliminating outdated transition information, adjusting the charter taxonomy. Do we get? You're up.
Me again. Yes, so as the town manager has been mentioning over the past several meetings, um, our town, the taxonomy, the numbering system and organization of our town charter is kind of out of step with where a modern charter for a community municipality should be. Um, additionally, the town charter still contains, um, a substantial amount of outdated language that only pertain to the transition from a Board of Selectmen.
that only pertain to the transition from a Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator form of government back in nineteen ninety-seven, to a council-manager form of government. I wanna emphasize that none of that language pertains to any future amendments. It only pertained to that change in the form of government. So it is outdated and is no longer necessary. So this year, we're proposing two charter amendments. The first one simply gets rid of that outdated language. On the redline copy, you'll see that we've crossed out Section 3.11, Section 8.5, and Article 10, and that's under the old numbering system. So all of that is outdated language and really has no bearing on our town governance at all moving forward. I'll pause there and see if anybody has any questions on that one.
Any questions? Nope, good.
Awesome. And so, if you continue on through the redline copy, you'll see that there, the rest of the charter is highlighted and has a red number next to it. Followed by the redline copy, there is a clean copy with the new numbering. So if you look through the two copies of the charter, you'll see that every single part of the current charter is accounted for in the new organization. Nothing has been removed, nothing has been added, and nothing has been changed, with the exception of transitional punctuation and references to the new section numbers. I didn't even fix issues in grammar, punctuation, missing words, nothing like that, because that, somebody could make the statement that that could be adjusting the meaning. What this does is it reorganizes it by, a lot more strongly by topic. You'll notice that all the things about council powers are together, all the things about elections are together, all the things about town manager, boards and commissions, prohibitions, they're all grouped together in a much more organized fashion. So at anybody's leisure, you can go through, find your favorite charter provision, and follow the number to the new one, see where it is.
Any questions? All right, we will have a public hearing on this on October 20, 2025.
Thank you very much.
Can you just talk about the process so that the members of the public also understand what, to make a charter amendment, what you have to do?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So in order to...
Sure, if I could just do that.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely. So yes, and there's two types of changes you can make to the charter. One is an amendment, and one is a revision. A revision is a significantly larger change, and basically, it changes your form of government, right? When they went from, when they made the change in the charter in nineteen ninety-six, when they voted on it, that was a major revision, because they went from selectman, administrator, to council manager. Nothing that, an amendment is any change that doesn't affect your form of government. And so, what needs to happen now is, as you just decided, this goes to a public hearing, and that gives the public an opportunity to weigh in. If there's any substantive changes to the amendment, we make them, and then we have to go back to another public hearing. So it's a little different than our normal ordinance process, in that you can change it that day and then pass it. This one, if you make any substantive changes, you can't pass it that day, you have to do another round. And that's actually built into our timeline. The next step from there is that it gets submitted to the DRA for review, to the Secretary of State's office, to the state. And the state then has forty-five days to review it and make sure that everything's okay with it. If they have any concerns, they'll email back, and they'll write back, but generally, within forty-five days, we will receive permission. And once we receive permission, the council has to act within seven days to put it on the ballot. So there's a little bit of a finesse in timing here, based on some kind of older timing factors, shall we say, in the RSAs that don't necessarily follow our modern meeting schedule, but we've taken that into account in the planning as well. And then, once the DRA approves it, once the council decides to put on the ballot, it'll go on the ballot in March for voters to vote on. It's up to the council and the town manager whether it goes on as one more or an article or two. You can split it, or you can put it together. That's a strategy decision above my pay grade. And once that is, if the voters, it needs a two-thirds majority to pass, and is it two-thirds or three-fifths, Sean? No, it's just majority, straight majority? Okay. I was being cautious. Always better to be cautious. And then, if it passes, it will go into effect on July 1st.
The next year.
Yeah, the July 1st of the next year. So if it passes in March 2026, it will go into effect of July 1st the following year.
So it goes to three state agencies, AG's office, DRA, and the Secretary of State's office. We will get one letter, the state's pretty good about doing this, we'll get one letter, and they know our timeline, so they'll give it to us, they'll date it in the date we need so that we can line it up with our meetings. They've been really good about working with town agencies to do that, even though there's a seven-day requirement, which is a bit awkward for everybody, but again, like everything else, we work things out, and they've been really good to work with, so we'll have that. So this is an elongated process for good reasons, and that, we're at the start of that right now to undertake that, and that's, as we'll move through.
Thank you. Up next, we're gonna discuss, review, approve the Town Council -103 Traffic Management Policy. Counsel, favor.
So, we wanted this on the agenda so the public could get a chance to look at it, so town councillors get a chance to look at, but due to the substantial size of this document, we want to take some time to have the council have further time to review this document, go and suggest and implement changes. Both I and Chairman Dunn had read through the entire document, we saw some things that could be changed, but we feel like we need, as a council, more time to review this document and take a look at it further. Since this deals with traffic management, one of my goals, I really had particular interest in it, so I wanna give you guys a chance to further dive down and take a look through it, and we can come back and suggest changes and revisit this at a future date.
Yeah. So if we have a change, just policy here, do we send it to Sean or to you?
To Sean.
To Sean, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't see the...
Yeah, I just wanted everyone to get a chance to read this, 'cause there's a lot of changes in here.
I skimmed through it, I didn't like, read it. It was a lot.
And I believe we had talked about a timeline after budget, right? Sometime in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so no urgency to read it tonight.
I've already read it.
Okay, I read it too.
Yeah, just to make sure.
But I think we wanna get it right, and I think there's some things in there that I, you know, I'd like to take out, so.
Yeah.
Does that seem fair to everybody?
Yeah, I mean, I know...
I think it would also make sense to maybe have a discussion with the town engineer and DPW with a full conversation on this, not just implementing the policy potentially, and have their input as well.
Is that what you're suggesting, Ted? Like a workshop on it?
So we already did that. We did the Traffic Safety Committee, which is, and they've recommended moving forward on this, so they've already weighed in on this.
Wonderful.
This is just us too, 'cause I mean, we've had a lot of policy lately, and so this is one of those times where I saw something that was forty pages, and I'm like, hey, let's take a pause, slow down a little bit.
Yeah, we don't need to zoom right through it, if you don't have to.
So everyone's good with that? We're just gonna have everyone read it, get their suggestions back to Sean, and we'll take it up in January.
Sean Mahaln.
Sean Mahaln, yes.
Thank you.
Next up, discuss and vote to approve Resolution 2025-21, establishing the Lunedary Old Home Committee as a 501(c)(3) organization. You again.
Got a minute to take a sip of water in between there, that time. Okay, so now's the time of year we start thinking about next year's Old Home Day, and I think we've all been privy to the conversations here before about the idea of moving Old Home Day back to a volunteer-run organization. This resolution creates, authorizes the town council to create, have the town manager do everything necessary to create an Old Home, the Lunedary Old Home Day Committee as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. There is much precedent for forming 501(c)(3) organizations that are closely associated with municipalities and states, think things like municipal hospitals, state universities, those are all 501, those are all considered 501(c)(3) organizations under the federal law for IRS purposes. And the caveat is that they need to be separately organized. So the way this would work is that the council would appoint a five-member Board of Directors. The members of the Old Home Day Committee would be the Board of Directors. One would be a town counselor, appointed on an annual basis by the chair, and the other four would be appointed to staggered three-year terms. So two the first year, one the, two, when they would be appointed, the two would be appointed for three years, one would be appointed for two years, one would be appointed for one year, and then they'd follow the same cycle as any other board. This board would receive extensive help and support and assistance from, you know, the town staff. As you, if you read through the charge, you'll see that certain responsibilities do remain with town staff. For example, coordinating facilities, liaising with public safety. Those are things that it can be a challenge, particularly in what has happened in the six years since it last lived with a volunteer committee, that would be difficult for volunteers to do effectively. So it would still receive support from the Recreation Department, the Town Manager's Department, but it would be run by volunteers, organized by volunteers, coordinated and marketed by volunteers. The advantage of having a 501(c)(3) organization is that it then makes the donations tax-deductible for anybody, any sponsors, anybody participating in it. And it also ensures having a 501(c)(3) registered with the state and registered with the IRS and with the New Hampshire Charitable Trust, show the three organizations that we would go to next. It ensures an extraordinarily high degree of transparency and accountability, because those forms have to be filed, and our finance department would help with that. Our administration would give them support with that. But the standard that you have to live up to when you have this organization, when you have a 501(c)(3) organization, is top-notch, and it would guarantee that everything is run smoothly and accounted in compliance with 91A and held to those standards. Did I miss anything?
No, I think the important things to highlight is there've been a number of issues across our state with fraud, waste, and abuse when it comes to nonprofits, because they're not publicly responsible, they don't have to have meetings in the public. We're requiring this committee to have public meetings where people can participate in those meetings and attend. We're talking about the financials being publicly available, we're gonna audit those. A lot of these nonprofits not have the funds to be able to do that, it'll be audit like everything else that we audit. So it'll be a 501(c)(3) that allows those donations to be made, it has its independent authority, 'cause it will operate and it will manage the Old Home Day affairs, but it will also have transparency that other nonprofits don't necessarily have.
Yep.
And again, accountability is the important part. The town will be providing the financial functions for that through our finance department. And again, also, those, that information will be readily available to the public, which is different, 'cause again, nonprofits, the rules are a little bit different on that.
Any questions?
Of course.
Good. I saw Deb first.
Don't go first.
Ladies first.
I saw, good, Deb, I saw you first.
Age before beauty.
I'll go age first. So Sean, just to clarify...
I'm still caught up on the other one, you just threw me off, go ahead.
Business makes a donation of a thousand dollars.
Yes.
That thousand dollars goes to our finance, or does it go to that committee and they set up an account?
No, we're setting up the account, we're managing the money for them, and it's paid at their request, so they have the authority.
So we handle everything in finance.
Say that.
We'll handle everything in finance.
Yes.
Thank you.
That way, we have the transparency and the issues that other nonprofits have had with members stealing funds is gonna be significantly reduced, 'cause there's an enormous amount of eyes on what we do here.
And finance will file the, for the charitable trust?
They'll work with them to file it, yeah. Certain things require signatures and everything, but they'll work with them to make sure that it's done correctly.
They'll fill it out, they have to sign it, but we fill it out and do all that, 'cause that's a lot of work that a lot of nonprofits struggle with.
Thank you.
And meeting those timelines as well, that a lot of them don't meet.
Exactly.
We will.
The good news is that we have a lot of the tracking infrastructure that we've put in place over the past few years when it's been in staff, so we're used to that level of detail, we're used to maintaining that level of accountability, and so when, we can certainly pass those systems over.
So when we look at appointing the five-member board, that we go through the same process as far as advertising for people to get on there and come in front of the council?
Yes. So I do have one typo in here, and just based on the timeline, I apologize, it says the November 3rd meeting. You would end up appointing at the November, I believe, the November 17th meeting, because those positions will post tomorrow. And if you approve it today, the positions will post tomorrow, they'll be open with all the other positions that are end-of-term until November 7th, and then you'd appoint at the, your second meeting in November, which is the 17th.
And I'm glad you made the distinctions about having the town help with the more difficult aspects, 'cause knowing what goes into a tax-exempt organization, it's not exactly particularly easy. But this is gonna be something that the town's gonna help guide with, so when people sign up for these boards, they don't have to worry that they're undertaking some gigantic amount of work.
Exactly, yes. And so, the big things that it's going to let people do, it's going to free up, it's gonna return to the volunteers the responsibility for making the decisions of all the good, fun stuff, without the boring paperwork, compliance stuff, because they're going to work with us on that. They'll still have to be involved, but they're gonna work on us with that. And it will also relieve the pressure on staff, and particularly for the past two years, Doug and myself, from tracking registrations, from going out and recruiting sponsors, these are best done by people in the community and not staff anyway. And so, those responsibilities will fall to the committee, and they'll recruit volunteers, they'll oversee the volunteers. That's the big responsibilities that they'll do. They'll decide the schedule of events, so I'm not, you know, we're not doing that anymore.
Go ahead, Deb, yeah.
So as somebody who sat on, I don't know, like, seven nonprofit boards and has started a nonprofit, will we be having a board of, an executive board, and then will we be writing our bylaws, and will there be a committee board? So how will all of that play into it? I mean, every nonprofit functions a little bit differently, but usually, there's the executive board that then, you know, initiates things, and then there are subboards to it, and bylaws.
This has five members, how they manage that is gonna be up to them.
But they have to fall within the rules of the nonprofit, and in the nonprofit states, you have to have an executive board.
That's the executive board, though.
Okay, but then, are they gonna, the executive board will be writing, we are not, the town is not gonna be writing their bylaws?
That'll be up to them to manage, they have to, that's, that's, that's the difference, they have to, it's self-governance, they have a responsibility to do this, as long as they meet the other requirements. So yes, if they wanna create a subcommittee, they can go and do that.
Okay, my only concern is the bylaws.
Yeah, that'll be up to them to manage, we don't have any authority to tell them what to do with that, they'll have to do that.
I understand.
Because that's what requires a 501(c)(3) anyway, so they're gonna have to do that.
I understand, but will there be some sort of, I mean, I know that New Hampshire, up in Concord, you guys, those guys back there, and you might know best, isn't there, these people, I just want them to be aware of what they're gonna be responsible for when they step onto this. There is a nonprofit class, I believe, that's for free, up in Concord.
Yeah, there's an association, nonprofit association.
There's educational, that they should learn how to write their bylaws, 'cause that is really, really, really important, and there are rules that govern those bylaws that allow them to function so that they can get, 'cause if you violate those things, you will not get your tax deductions. So you have to make sure that these things are done correctly.
So we'll be, also, we'll be coming to you with the Articles of Agreement, which are the ones that are required to establish it, establish the organization, we'll be coming to those, provided you pass this resolution tonight, the next meeting, the October 20th meeting, I'll be coming to you with draft Articles of Agreement. And at that point, that's when we can get your signatures to form the organization. And then, we'd file with the, we'd start the paperwork for the IRS, we'd start the paperwork with the state, and once the state's approved, then you go to the New Hampshire Charitable Trust and get approval from them as well. This is the process that we would work with, we absolutely would give them any resources they need to effectively write their bylaws.
Yeah, and while you're on the phone with the New Hampshire Charitable, just ask, I know there's a free class you can take, because many, many, many moons ago, I took that class, got a, if I could remember any of it, but I did take it once. And I'm sure rules and regs have changed since then, but that's, 'cause I just don't wanna set it up for failure. I just want people to understand, when they step up for this board, it's a very serious position that they're taking. Even though I think it's wonderful that we're doing it, and I like the idea of the transparency and the less burden on the government, I just want the people that are stepping up to understand what they're gonna be stepping into, and not take it, "Oh, we're just gonna have a party, we're just gonna do this and do that." And yeah, you can, but you really have to follow certain rules.
On that note, Deb, I absolutely understand that concern on the form, that people, the Talent Bank form.
Yeah.
It lists the different Old Home Day director terms, 3, 2, 1, but it also has a slot for volunteer ad hoc, so we can gather interest from people now who are just interested in volunteering.
Yeah, I just would hate to set something up for failure, I just don't like to do that. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You go ahead.
All right. I propose, I move that the Lunenberry Town Council hereby establishes the Lunenberry Old Home Day Committee, nonprofit organization, and authorizes the town manager to take any and all actions necessary for its establishment and registration with all state and federal agencies.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Deb. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative.
Thank you.
Up next, old business. Present the options relating to clarifying or changing the duties and responsibilities of the Budget Committee. Counselor Faber, you wanted to start off?
Yeah. I think discussing this, and this is something we can talk about, a consensus as a board, but more or less, we were thinking that the town manager is already working and defining the responsibilities of many of the boards in town and putting a lot of work into it. He's put a lot of work into outlining a new budget process, getting transparency in there, actually writing into some of these codes about how we're going to present the information to them in advance and go through a new budget process. And I think with that, I don't feel like we need to do any changes here tonight. We just need to instruct the town manager to go further down that road and continue the work he's doing on really outlining what the Budget Committee does and getting that put into our documents.
Discussion, question?
That sounds good.
I just want to see the Budget Committee more utilized from the past. I know from watching, being involved myself on the Budget Committee, Budget Committee spends a lot of time, effort, putting their stuff together. And I think that we need to be listening more to that. I also think that I feel that the Budget Committee should be involved year-round, not just, okay, here comes the budget process, let's get the Budget Committee involved. They need to be getting involved throughout the whole year, meeting with department heads, finding out, hey, why are you over on this line and this and that? So that when it comes to budget time, it's a lot, you know, easier for them to understand.
That's exactly right. And so I'm also a Budget Committee Liaison, so I've had several conversations with them. And that's one of the things that, talking with Sean, that he wants to do, help them with their agendas, help them with, so we're getting year-round this input, getting the right things on there, getting that information in advance so they can make these decisions. So it's not just, hey, you're here from November to January and then the rest of the year, you kind of, you know, do whatever. It's, they're going to be more focused on them and getting it written down that, you know, they're at advisory, but their input comes in here and I think it's going to be a good thing to get that. Because right now, it doesn't really mention the Budget Committee in any of our docs at all, so.
Can we hear from the Chair of the Budget Committee?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely, come on up.
I'd like to hear his input.
Absolutely.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Joseph Gagnon, 219 Winding Pond Road. So at our previous Budget Committee meeting, Sean and Kirsten came in and we discussed the proposed changes, excuse me, towards our role heading into the future. In taking a look at these, we saw just adopting the statute, it would be rigid, it wouldn't allow for flexibility with, if we want to make changes with how the Budget Committee operated, going through the charter process is time-consuming and whereas the voters have already voted via citizens' petition warrant article for us to have more active role, I think the voters have already spoken they want that. So what, a few of us that had a definitive opinion, they were looking, were looking more so in a change in the municipal code to clearly define what our role is, what our responsibilities are, and what our, you know, what our powers, how we'll be able to govern. The general consensus is we would like to know sooner rather than later. I would hope for the upcoming, not for this upcoming budget season, budget workshops, but for next year's, that we can have a different role, a different place and just have that definition, seeing as it was just, it was last year's, last March's, where the voters approved and they wanted to have us have this increased role.
Is that what you're talking about, Sean, when you're saying?
To some degree. I mean, I think if you want to hear more from it, Sean can give you more detail on.
Yeah, so we're writing the entire administrative code and one of those, it really defines all of the boards and committees, what they do, what's better definition. We have nothing, I mean, there's one sentence about the Budget Committee, the Charter, and it doesn't say what its role is at all, it just says there'll be seven members that are elected. That's not common. Usually there's some definition about what they're supposed to do and there's certain expectations in. So if you authorize me to do that, I will draft the changes to that in that code, which you'll first see on January 5th of 2026 and presumably you would approve at a public hearing at the next one, January, I don't know if it's 18th or 20th, whatever it falls on the calendar there. So that would be done that way. And if, once that's done, it will line them, the Budget Committee, up for the next budget process because I'm going to be proposing statut earlier, which will be a conversation between the council and the Budget Committee, working together to say, look, this is the new schedule that we agree to and the new process by which we will do this and then move forward. The other part is some of the basic things, and I put them in there, I mean, they should be looking at quarterly budget reports. That way they're in tune to the budget all the time. They don't have any staff support. I mean, every other board and committee has staff support. We should be providing that to them. The chairman should not be worrying about putting together, we should put it together for him or her and then say, okay, here are the items, are you good with that? Yes. Get it out there and taking care of all those, I call them most of staff functions that the volunteers should not, they should be focusing on the meat of what it is, the budget issues. So those things, I've already put those in place anyway because there's nothing that prohibits me from doing that. But I think it's important that it's spelled out in the code what they're supposed to do and everybody knows what that is. And staff has to comply with it, not that we don't anyway, but it should be really clear, we can point to and say, here's their duties and responsibilities. Yes, staff, your job is to provide the things that they need, that you would see in probably most other communities that have an advisory budget committee. And by statute, we're talking about a lot of those things that are already required in statute, we're just going to put them in our code in terms of providing documentation to them, the things that they need to do their work.
So that's C that we're looking at, preparing an ordinance for changes to the administrative code.
It's actually not C. No, it wasn't one of those three, so we had discussed that and that's why I wanted to bring that option forward to you guys because it's something that we're already working on.
So if you look at the cover sheet, it gives you three options, A, B, and C.
Correct.
So it's just prepare an ordinance for changes to the administrative code. When I did my report, I put them option 1, 2, and 3. So that's why I think Vice Chair Faber is probably confused by it.
So we're on the same page.
So the cover sheet, just to put it all in one place, I put it A, B, and C, and it spells out what C is, prepare an ordinance for change to the administrative code.
Yep.
Which is, I'm already working on that, but I need actual authorization to do it. And if you do that, if you do that motion, then you'll ratify the work that I'm already doing to put it in.
I can do that.
Wait, I wanted to say something.
Sorry. Sorry.
I just want to say that I agree with this as the citizen who did put it on the petition and wanted to help the Budget Committee out on this. I'm happy to see that it's finally moving forward. And thank you, Sean and staff, who got all this. And thanks to the board, I mean, for supporting me on this to make some changes. And I do hope they take it a step further and present to us, maybe even monthly, the Budget Committee, like as they, as we start seeing departments, like they should be here at our meetings and they should be giving input. So it should be more workshop-y, like all throughout the year as we're going through budget season, so that everything isn't like, you know, trying to eat this whole cake in one bite. It's like, at least we're taking pieces, having long, meaningful discussions, looking, really looking at what's there. So I'm really, really, as one person, I'm very, very excited about this step going forward. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And I think, I think Mr. Mahollen is on the same page as you because he wants to get us that stuff a month early than we get it normally.
Yep.
So I think we're all on the same page with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Do you want to ask if there's any other members of the Budget Committee here?
Sure.
With their input?
Would anybody else?
Kate.
Kate, come on, yeah. If you want to, please.
My kids come outside.
I know. Always like to hear from you, Kate, you always have a good perspective, so.
Thanks, honey.
Please.
No, the only, I do think it's great that we're formalizing this process. I think the municipal code is a really good first step. Eventually, I do think changing the charter in and of itself is a good one. As part of this, I was curious as to whether or not you foresaw us being more formalized in a, do we write, do we have bylaws? Like, I know, like the Board of, the Library Trustees have their bylaws, do we as a committee have bylaws for budgets? You know, or are we adhering to the towns or how formal are we?
You establish your own rules or procedure.
Okay.
That you have and then how you operate as a committee, like all the committees are allowed to do here in the town. So you do that, but you don't have bylaws because they're in a different spot, they have a statute or provision that you don't have.
Okay. All right, so would part of that be us developing kind of our own rules and?
Rules or procedure, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Just like the council has rules or procedure, the planning board does, you can, you have, you're free to do that now, even though it doesn't say that.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, that's why if we spell out what your duties and responsibilities are, you'll have that and you'll know that, and if, when you, when someone else replaces you folks eventually, oh, this is what we have to do.
Yep.
These things here.
Okay.
So Kate, like having public comment at the beginning and the end, that's a rule of your procedure. If you wish to allow people to speak through each thing on the agenda.
Okay.
That's up to the Chair to make those decisions up as you're meet, I think you have to do it within the first week after election or something like that?
But I believe, you know, during our first, during our first meeting, right, so those are some of the things that we established, but to have something written to be passed on to the next chairman, especially where there's sometimes, you know, high turnover with the Budget Committee where you can have a whole new board over the span of two, three years, three or four elections.
Well, I think Sean and myself and a couple other counselors and Kate, I know you and I've talked about it.
Yep.
Policies and procedures are number one and it needs to be written. So there's no, I'm not sure this is the way we did it in the, no, this is what it is. And if you don't like it, you can change it formally, but I think that moving forward, this is what's going to alleviate a lot of the, well, I don't know, you know, I'm not sure, you know, this, the, I think it's going to help a lot.
I think so too. Because I was kind of floored when Sean said that it's basically a board of seven people elected to three-year terms. And that's it. I was like, what?
All right, let's change that.
Yeah, yeah. All righty.
Doesn't say you could do anything at all, so I mean.
Great, job's done.
You can get a dollar.
I'll move that the Lunenberry Town Council directs the town manager to choose C for the town council to consider regarding the governance and authority of the Budget Committee.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Ted. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative.
Yay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Up next, we have the approval of the consent items. I will accept the motion to accept the consent items.
So moved.
Motion from Sean.
Second.
Second from Ted. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Up next, we have liaison reports.
I will go first. On September 25th, I joined the airport at the, every three-year training that they do with all the surrounding communities for the fire, police and ambulances if there is ever a catastrophic event that happens at the airport. They had actors, they had other nursing students from across the state come and partake as people who would have been potentially injured from the event, people who were dazed and confused, who had, they even had people there with a whole makeup crew to put the injuries on to people as well. It was quite an event. Kirsten went along as well from enjoining the fire department and so she got to see a different angle than what I got to see as an observer. So it was quite an event. And I think what probably intensified it too was, it was raining that day, pretty hard. And so, you know, normally in this kind of event, they might have been having it separated out in tents everywhere, but this was a muddy field and it kind of, in a way, put a more of a drear to the effect of the day with the rain and the fog. They had a bus that looked like an airplane that had blown up, they had engines that were there on fire, it was quite an ordeal. It went on for, Kirsten, was it six, seven hours that they had done so about?
I think it wrapped up in about four this time because they, everybody did a very good job.
Exactly. And it was quite an event. The Mayor of Manchester came as well and there were, I think that he and I were the only other, I guess, dignitaries that were there. But one of the other board members from the Manchester Airport Authority was there, the others could not make it with their work schedules. But it was an interesting time, I will say. And offside note, I went to the Woodmont Commons Fall Fest on Saturday. It was probably the most packed I've seen, their event that they've done over the past four or five years. The wonderful weather certainly helped and I was glad to see more kids' activities there, making it more of a family feel of, as I certainly saw other families from my son's daycare program were there as well. And it was quite a packed event.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else with liaison report?
So Budget Committee, yes, that liaison, obviously the topic discussion was this. I'm glad we came, thank you to the council for coming, a good resolution to that. We also had the first meeting of the DPW Committee for the facility and, you know, did a good tour around the site again, kind of discussed some of the preliminary things. Going to be doing tours of other DPW facilities and moving forward from there. So good bunch so far, good kickoff.
Excellent.
I need to actually add one more item as I'm the liaison for SAU building that will be attached here potentially, is we've had our most recent meeting discussing plans and off of our 20% drawings done and we'll be moving forward and having a joint meeting with the town council and the school board on October 21st, correct Sean?
Correct.
At the high school, at their meeting location. And we'll be going over the details of the project at that time so that everyone can be well-informed and educated and everyone can find out more about the whole project. And I think it will be a wonderful project moving forward and we've really hashed out a lot of the positives and negatives of it moving forward.
Excellent.
Sean, I just want to mention District 5 Mammoth Road, they're building a new facility there. You might want to check out. Very impressive.
I just want to ask Sean a question.
Sure.
Sean, I didn't go to the last planning board, but you were there and, but they were talking at the end about the Heritage Committee and its roles and functions.
Yeah.
And I had a question, is that the planning board's pervy to discuss the roles and functions or is it the council's pervy?
No, it's the planning board because they extend out.
Heritage Commission falls under planning.
Yep.
Okay, so does that, in that roles and discussions, does that then affect what we talked about for the Reverend Moore's, the Lions Hall?
No, it shouldn't affect that.
I'm just going to call it Meeting House because it's easier.
As what Bob presented tonight, and it seems like we're all on the same page as that, that's really what we're going to be moving forward.
I just was concerned because we said that this is what they were going to cover and now we're changing it and?
We are. And I think that's, part of it is just, that seems to make more sense from that. In the end of the day, I think our goal is to get something on the ballot ready for March because we all know this building can't wait. And we also know, it's been three years that we've been talking around. So we want to get the best thing we can for the voters in March, let the town decide what the future of that building is and proceed accordingly, depending on what the voters say.
Right. But like I said, my concern's more of the heritage, what will their role be or changing? Did, I didn't figure out what they wanted to do and I thought, oh, you're going to do, figure out what they wanted to do and I thought, oh, you're gonna do, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No, I, just to answer your question, um, so that, that discussion was primarily focused on the development review committee in that process, specifically when reviewing, um, design review applications for site plan and subdivisions.
Okay.
So separate, that's kind of like the other vein, if you will, to heritage, uh, and what the role has been in Londonberry.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a separate discussion, at least in, from what I understood it to be, from, um, their input on historic properties, heritage in town. Two separate conversations.
There are definitions of the heritage commi- committee in statute. And so it's just following along, making sure that things follow along with that and see how that fits in the process. Cause we've been looking at not just that, but the overall process altogether. So it's just trying to make sure that everything fits together in a well-working. Cause they haven't been reviewed in a while, to be honest.
Yeah. Well, I kind of wanted a little bit more of information and I wasn't there. It wasn't really public input there, so I couldn't, even if I ran down, I couldn't say anything.
No problem.
I, I would love it if you would elaborate a little bit on, um, Woodmont and the ADUs.
I want to talk about.
Cause that's kind of interesting. That's a whole new subject matter.
Um, so what they, we took a look at and it was just, um, presented, I was just looking in the audience to see. Um, so the present, the presentation we saw is what they just wanted to see. And this wasn't any kind of vote we took or anything else.
Right, no, I know.
They wanted to, it would not change the square footage and it would not change the number of units per. So it would be, instead of being an ADU, it'd be classified as a owner. And that would be the only, so it was just giving flexibility in it, but not changing the square footage, not, I'm saying that correctly.
I'm gonna add a couple of comments if you don't mind. So, um, again, discussion only to get the planning board's initial feedback. Uh, any decision would come with your typical site plan review process.
Yep.
Um, under the PUD itself. So the discussion was, uh, and Sean did capture it, but just to emphasize, talking about potentially utilizing the, um, density that the PUD allows for specifically for ADUs and the square footage requirement. So the square footage requirement follows, um, what our standard zoning requires for ADUs, so 750 square feet. Uh, so the discussion was focused on, um, some more flexibility around how to apply that density and square footage uh, to the PUD itself. So whether that's, you know, can we consider, um, combining ADUs into a building that still amounts to the same square footage if you were to keep that density of, of ADU in that sub area? Or something along those lines. Again, just talking about any degree of flexibility that the planning board would be willing to consider when we're specifically considering the square footage and density that's already allowed, um, in the PUD ordinance.
Okay, so it, it, the square footage seems, the square footage stays the same, but the amount of units would then up a little bit, right? Cause if you're adding something on.
Number.
So if you, I'm just gonna be stupid here, okay? So this is a stupid apartment building, hypothetical, and it, it has 26 units in it, right? And then you put ADUs into a certain amount of them and then that gives you another 10 units?
No.
So the primary point.
Cause that's what I was understanding. I was getting very, very confused.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit convoluted, but the, the main takeaway is this would not increase the total allowed density or the total allowed square footage for ADUs in the PU, in the Woodmont PUD. It would be talking about a different, a different way to apply it.
It's just because of the rigidity of how it was written. So it, you want to make sure we, we clarified, no extra square footage, so nothing gets bigger. No extra unit numbers, so there's not more housing. It's just flexibility in how those are assessed. And it's probably best if anyone at home is curious to watch the presentation itself.
I mean, I watched it and I, I walked away confused and I just was trying to understand it because I got people that asked me questions. And I was a dumb-dumb and I'm like, I really don't understand because if you're not changing anything, what does it matter what it's called? And so that was where I was like, I don't understand.
That was kind of the conversation.
Yeah.
Does, does it matter? So your exact question.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I kind of did understand it, but I thought I was missing something.
The, the, the point generally is it probably doesn't matter. And that's why you didn't really get anything out of it. Because it's, it's not shifting around a ton, but they would need approval and it would come up in a site plan in the future to talk about. So it was just a conceptual thing to discuss to see if we had anything against it before they went down that road.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for clarifying both of you because I thought I was missing something.
Since Deb had brought up the heritage commission, so at our last heritage commission meeting, we had decided to table the conversation about making Lions Hall historic or not at this time being, as we want to bring in, um, people from the state. And we'd like to also have people from the Arco company that did the investigation on the building. And we'd want to find out more about the real qualifications upon if this building actually really qualifies for being historic or not. That and also, there was a big feeling from the people in the room, on the board, that they want to wait, find out from the voters. If they're actually going to approve any money on the Warren article to even go forward, to actually do the improvements or not. So that's really where it stands. It kind of stands in the limbo right now as we're waiting on more information from state representatives, from their departments and from the voters.
Any other liaison reports?
Oh, Leadership Londonberry was fun.
That was great.
We won on the bus tour.
Yeah, the bus tour was fun.
Deb came with me. Uh, it was a great time.
We caused a lot of trouble, Dan and I on that bus.
I bet Dan did cause a lot of trouble. I was surprised that I saw Dan before noon. Sorry.
We did a lot of talking.
I, I do think that we should make mention, um, about Mr. Paige Clark passing. Um, who was a significant citizen in our town, along with Joseph Coro.
Yes.
Um, who, who also passed. So, uh, this week, sorta, maybe two weeks, we've lost two, uh, key people in our town.
Yep.
I just wanted to make mention of that.
Absolutely.
Any other liaison reports?
Nope.
All right. Town manager report.
So I provide you, as you know, I provided the transition plan, 90-day transition plan when I first came here back in June. Seems so long ago. And I told you at the end of that I'd provide a 90-day, uh, SWAC analysis. When I say that, not a full SWAC where you sit down, you go through as a team, but just my observations. Um, you have that in front of you. I didn't plan to go through it line by line. I know that you know how to read. Unless there's any particular questions in that, I'll just say this, that, you know, that, obviously you already know this, this is a great community to be in. And my period of time here hasn't changed my thought about that at all. Like every other municipality, there are things we need to work upon and improve. Nobody has the, the shining city on the hill with the streets repaid with gold. At least I haven't found it yet. Uh, if you do, let me know. Um, but it, again, we, uh, there are things we need to work on. But other than that, the, the town really, um, you know, you've got some really good departments. We've made quite a few changes in a very short period of time that I have not been able to do anyplace else like we've been able to do it here. So I'm really encouraged by the staff's interest in doing that and boards and committees, the feedback we're getting from people and being able to do that. And the changes the council has made in terms of transparency, the public engagement initiative that you folks have agreed to that we're gonna be launching here starting in, in, in November, uh, those are real progress, uh, things that, you know, the, the town has made collectively between staff and, uh, again, the town council and the board. So very encouraged, again, you've got the report. I'm not gonna read through it again. Other than that, unless there's any questions about that, I was gonna go on to the next two meetings and just kind of go through those agendas.
No, I'd just like to thank you for putting it together. I think it's very well done. Um, I think it's something that we needed. And I know I found it, um, to be well-written and well-done. So I want to thank you for doing it.
Okay. So our next meeting, of course, is on October 20th and we'll have the public hearing on the taxonomy and the elimination potentially of Article Number 10, which is the transition, uh, provisions that took effect back in 1997. A public hearing, receive input, discuss and act upon building permit and land use application fees which you approved tonight. And yet another public hearing, receive public input, discuss the eligible exemptions. And then Vinnie Coro will be here to discuss the tunnels to towers, mobile exhibit, uh, presentation they're gonna have in 2027, we're scheduled for. It's just informational for you folks to get up to speed on that and ask any questions you might have. Discuss and approve the library memorandum agreement. We've worked the library trustees through that, made a few changes here and there. But I think that's, uh, they're, they're good with it the way it is. It's up to you to approve now and then we can, um, you know, to operate under that, uh, MOA. Uh, and then after that, we have discuss and approve old home day committee, uh, articles of agreement, which we should have for you by then. The quarterly budget status review for the first quarter of this fiscal year. Uh, discuss creating a water fund for the design and construction of water line extensions. Discuss creating a transportation infrastructure capital reserve fund. Consider feedback on the draft revised ethics code, amend as needed and authorize the town manager to obtain further comments on the revised draft. So we receive feedback from, uh, some boards and committees and staff. And then, as you know, we had a public engagement session here where we got a lot of things that, very, very encouraged by that. There was a long list of items to consider for changes and I, I consider those to be very positive. Now, as we talked about, this is an elongated process. We'll come back to you and say, okay, these are the, the things that folks asked us to recommend to you to look at. And you'll tell me, yeah, do this one, this one, this one, or maybe not do that one, whatever it is. I will plug that in, create another draft, that'll go back to boards and committees, back to staff, another public engagement session on, on a new draft of what the ethics code, because there were so many good recommendations in there. It'll, there may potentially be quite a few changes. So it makes sense to go back, do the process all over again. And then when that's done, come back to you and if you approve that, have a first hearing, a first reading, and then a public hearing because it, we're proposing to be a code provision. And then we can do that. So that'll push that sometime into the, the winter, January, February, because we'll be busy, busy with budgets in November and December, if that makes sense. And then we have a discussed request by Councilor Paul to consider creating pocket parks. That is for the 20th. That's on a Monday. Obviously Tuesday, the 21st is, uh, Councilor Combs talked about, a joint meeting with the school board. Councilor Paul suggested we consider doing those. And obviously this is an opportunity to do that because we have a project right on the other side of this wall that's being proposed. And as Councilor Coombs, who was our, uh, rep on there, on that committee, uh, will go over the 20% plans, the cost estimates and the conceptual plan. And you'll be meeting jointly with the school board in, in the cafeteria at the high school at 7:00 PM on the 21st. November 1st is a workshop, but the public is allowed to participate and they can come and watch the proceedings on that. And that will be in here at 9:00 AM and that's scheduled from 9:00 to about 3:30 PM. And I'll make a budget overview presentation. There'll be questions and comments by the budget committee as well as the council. Police budget, uh, fire budget and then DPW. So the big three will occur on that particular day. And then the other boards and committees that don't normally make presentations will do that on the other days that are in the schedule that we provided. So we're making some changes, some incremental changes to the budget process this year. I wouldn't call them significant compared to what we're gonna be looking at for next year, but at least we're making some, uh, some changes to hopefully streamline the process a little bit better. But that's scheduled for November 1. And then of course, there's a meeting on November 3rd and we'll talk about that, uh, obviously as we get closer. My, my plan is to only put items on the agenda that absolutely must be addressed during the month of November and December because we'll be very busy with budgets. And then, you know, we'll have to deal with the rest of those items starting in January and February again. And that is all I have for you unless you have any questions of me.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Assistant Town Manager report.
Just to note for the council that the planning board will have their first work session for the revised PUD ordinance on Wednesday. Uh, and I cannot emphasize enough that this is the first work session. This is an overhaul of the ordinance. So we're looking for this to be productive and a lot of feedback and back and forth from the board itself initially. And then of course, we have additional work sessions and a hearing scheduled at the planning board level. Um, but again, this is the first look at this revised, um, ordinance. So we're looking forward to working through that on Wednesday.
Thank you.
And for that meeting, it's, it's just the board. Public can't talk, correct? They can attend, but they can't.
Uh, that's at the discretion of the chair, but I would anticipate, uh, it being primarily the board that provides the feedback.
Okay.
And, and again, there is a, a second work session scheduled and a hearing scheduled at the planning board level.
Yeah.
But I would envision Wednesday being board-focused.
I just didn't want anybody to go and get upset that they couldn't speak. And so.
And again, I'll defer to the chair, but I would anticipate it being board-focused.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have a public comment.
No.
Are you here for the interview?
Yes, right.
Never mind.
Yeah, maybe you need, need a few more after this. How's that?
I know.
Um, hi, Jan McLaughlin, um, 38 Rainbow Drive, also treasurer to the library, um, board of trustees. We have been rather silent, um, as we have been, um, a, anticipating, um, uh, some board action on the, um, alternate, alternates, uh, to the board, um, to our board, um, your appointment of them. Um, we did in fact, uh, get together as a board, um, way back in June and, um, voted on a, uh, went into deliberations, uh, came up with a combined slate um, that was acceptable to all seven board of trustees. I just say that because, uh, the next day, two of them showed up here and said, oh, it was a terrible process. But anyway, um, sorry. I, I'm speaking just for myself, not for the entire board, as you can tell. I've just a little wound up this evening. Um, so, um, we did have a unanimous vote of all seven of us um, for three names, which we forwarded to you folks. We were told that no vote would be taken the next, uh, meeting of yours because your agenda was packed and there would be no vote about the, and so none of us needed to come. Um, really won't believe that ever again, but, um, uh, however, the next meeting, members of the public and as I say, two members of, um, our board came and said how terrible it was and it was unfair and we want you to take over and would you please do this? And so you did. And then you also, in addition to that, then also put off, um, the process for another couple of months, didn't take it up until August. Then things were gonna happen in September, then they were gonna happen in October and they happened tonight and we still don't have a list. In December of 2024, actually it was November of 2024, our chair resigned due to, um, family obligations. And at that time, we asked for a replacement to be appointed since we had no alternates. And, um, one wasn't. So for a number of months till we got to the March vote, we only had six members, although New Hampshire RSA's clearly states that the board of trustees for the library has to have an uneven number so that they can have votes that aren't tied. And we went a long period of time without that. Then come in, um, the March elections, we have a new board sat and, um, things did get a little bit testy and they still are. Unfortunately, things like, um, removing the board of trustees who has come to a, um, decision together from the process of appointing the trustees to the library, as is we supposed to, Grant, we were supposed to provide you with the names, which we did. And then instead of just agreeing or not agreeing, you just took over the process. Okay, that's fine. Uh, but we need a process. We need this to happen. Because at any time, we could have someone who's ill. Someone who, for whatever reason, like maybe being tired of always being berated in public by a variety of members of the public or, um, being accused of, well, I've been personally accused of being a criminal, um, being, um, disrespectful, be, you know. It goes on and on. Um, I assure you, I am not a criminal. Um, I don't even play one on television. And, um, well, maybe I do if you watch, anyway, never mind. Um, but, uh, that this is a, um, a real problem with this, the alternates in particular. Second, about the mediation in June, since, um, we haven't talked about that either. The mediation in June came up toward the end of June. It was obvious that we were having some difficulty working together as a board. I think mediation is wonderful. In fact, my sister, um, was a mediator, um, uh, at the state level for, um, family law and in fact, established the mediation procedures for, uh, and the mediation, um, group for, um, family law, um, in this state and wrote much of the legislation dealing with family law. Um, but she's not a mediator for, um, this kind of mediation. This mediation was scheduled very quickly. It was being rushed in schedule to get, have it happen before the library directors and the town managers already pre-scheduled vacations.
Um, 30 seconds, just so you know.
Okay. All right. Anyway, um, we had this mediation scheduled and, um, the mediator was not a legal mediator. Um, and, um, we had to cancel the session because none of us could get our, uh, legal advice before the board was going to be, this mediation was gonna be scheduled. This letter of no confidence that was presented to you tonight, no names of the staff were attached to the letter that was sent to us. Again, myself and three other board members were maligned and as usual, uh, inaccurate information was provided.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have a public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you for having a microphone for short people. Um, my name is Maura Ryan. I live at Two Snowberry Hollow. I am also a library trustee. However, I am speaking for myself and not for the entire board, which is not how some of the other board members operate. However, I have a question for Mr. Mulholland. I would like to know, um, what you're working on. like to know what you're working on for changes for the MOA, because we voted to accept it as is, and we haven't voted to make any changes, sir.
Director. What you voted on, I made those changes, and you approved.
We did not vote on any changes.
Well, your chairman said they did, so I'm not going to sit here now. This goes on and on and on.
Director comments are me.
Yep, that's fine. All right, then I will. But I also wanted to say that I did not turn in any information for the mediation, because it was three days away, and that is not sufficient time, in my opinion. But I do think that, I think things have been said where, you know, we're all, you know, I didn't know anybody on this board before coming onto this board. I had no idea of anybody's personalities or anything, and I'm disappointed, because in looking up the RSA, it says that the town council shall appoint alternates if requested by the library, and we did request it. So you know what shall means in the state law, so it shall. So that's my public comment. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment?
Richard Blonsky, 89 Hall Road. It'll be short and sweet. This kind of mirrors what Maura just said. I would suggest that you, as a board, look at RSA 202A:10 and RSA 669:75, because I don't understand why you put off the vote last time nor this time. I understand what you're saying, oh, because of the turmoil. That's not your problem, unfortunately. This is the only RSA that I'm aware of where you have any interaction with the library, and it's to name either trustees or alternates, depending on which one. And it does, both of them say shall, not may, shall. It's just not happening. It's just, this is why this stuff keeps going on. I've been going to these meetings for a year, and I've been trying to bring up many, many of the laws and the bylaws that both sides aren't going by. 91A, how raises are given out, no purchasing policy, money's being moved between line items that nobody can account for. Yes, they are always under budget. That doesn't mean the accounting's right. And this is just one more thing. I would have loved to have been there, as I said earlier, because I do look at the RSA's. I do research them. I do look into their budget. And here we go, for the second time, no vote. I don't know what part of shall isn't understood. I understand that if you want to get involved, and Sean and the board wants to make recommendations and work with them, you have the right to do that, but it's not a legal right. It's, hey, let's all get together and play good in the sandbox. This is just going to be more time wasted, more time nothing getting done. It's disappointing. And how many of you have actually looked really deep into what's going on in the RSA's that aren't being followed? When I went in there, I said, there's two parts of the library. There's the front end that the patrons see. I've never made any comments on that, because it looks fine to me. I've always looked at the business end, the backend, and it's not in good shape. And that's the rift between the board. You've got four members that want to follow the RSA's, the bylaws, and the policy, and you've got some that want to leave it status quo. Well, status quo is not in accordance with the law. Whether you agree with the law or not is irrelevant. The law is what the law is until the law is changed. All right? Take a good look at those laws, the way, you know, I'm seeing. One thing that was brought up tonight is that, well, the council doesn't have any alternates for your board. I don't think, as far as I know, and I could be wrong, I'd have to research it more, I don't think there's a provision for you to have alternates. So that is really irrelevant that you don't have them. There is a provision for the library, which is why I brought it up, that they should have at least one, if not three. And tonight you said, well, we may name, before everything happened, we may name one to three. They already told you they want three, because they gave you originally a list of three names that they wanted as alternates. So that's what they told you. You may not want to hear this, but this isn't helping the situation at all either. It's just another part of it. So take a look at those RSA's. 202A:10, 66975. It says shall, not may, can if we want to. I've brought this up, I think it was last December, about the alternates they should look into it. It's going to be a year. This is not how you get things done.
Thank you.
Hello again, Maria Peroud. I also want to follow up on a comment of Richard, because I absolutely agree with the fact that the laws are not being followed in the library, and that's, in my view, that's where the problem started. Because there was certain status quo for many years, where library trustees gave away a lot of their responsibilities and put them onto the library staff, like preparing the budget, minutes, certain other subjects. And now the new library trustees were elected in March, and they wanted to follow the law. And in following the law, it required to get back some of the responsibilities that were burdening the library staff, which I think library staff should be focusing on their job, and library trustees can do their job. Like minutes, there was no, the minutes were prepared by the library staff, and we're grateful for that, but this is not their job. So I think a lot of issues came from library trustees want to follow the law, want to take up their responsibilities and their duties, and the library staff is not willing to do that. Or some of the library trustees would like to also remain with the status quo. And I think that's where the problem started, because when we're not following the law, when you're not following the rules, personal preferences come in, and all these issues start up. And there was a process established here with voting according to the law, and today, because of the letter of no confidence, suddenly we're backing out. The only, I have an issue with the letter of no confidence from the library staff. In the voting, the library director was not voting there, but there were other managerial positions there. How an employee going to vote against their manager? Obviously, they're going to vote in one way, following whatever the manager tells them. So I understand that the employees might not be happy with some changes happening, but there's law is not being followed. We need to straighten these things out, and there is a part of library trustees that are trying to do that, trying to follow. They're being villainized online. There is a lot of problems being just whipped out online, a lot of outrage, which is unnecessary. I agree that chair does not lead the meetings properly, as they should, but I think there is willingness from most of the trustees to follow the law, so we just need to focus on that. So that's my only thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment? Deb, go ahead.
Well, this kind of disturbs me, just the hearing, that we shall do something. What happens if we don't? I mean, that just makes us not doing the right thing, and we're supposed to follow those laws and rules. I mean, we're asking the town manager on a regular basis to make sure we're all up to date with rules and regulations and following the RSA's, and now we're not following them. So I'm just concerned about the decision we made. I mean, I didn't realize that part of it, and I don't know, now I feel like, I don't know. I'm very confused, really, and I just, truly just want to do the right thing, and I feel like we're not getting there. And I understand their frustration. I don't blame them.
Okay.
Mr. Town Manager, what are we responsible for?
I would not have you do things that are illegal. So I have the statute in front of me, so I'm going to read it, so we're very clear about what it says and what it specifically does not say. At the top of the statute, vacancies occurring on any board of library trustees in a town should be filled as provided in RSA 669.75. And it talks about the vacancies and the process for that part of it. There's another sentence down below that applies to alternates. The board of library trustees may recommend to the appointing authority the names of no more than three persons who may serve as alternate members on the board when elected members of the board are unable to attend a board meeting. The alternate members shall be appointed to one-year terms. If you're going to appoint them, it is a one-year term. If the statute reads something to the effect of, the council shall, or the board of selectmen shall appoint alternates, and they did not write that in here, they specifically wrote it the way they wrote it, then you would have to do that. This does not require you to appoint alternates to the board, because they've asked you to. It does not. That's not what it says, and it's a misinterpretation. I have to say otherwise is incorrect. So I don't know if I could be more clear about that than I have.
Well, don't yell at me.
I'm not yelling at you.
I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing.
Emphasis to that. When someone makes an allegation that we are acting illegally...
I just wanted the clarification, just to make sure that what we did was okey-dokey. That's all.
I don't, no, 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 no. Any other one for public comments? All right, I will close public comments. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Ted, second from Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes in affirmative.